Town manager has left the room. Oh, he's back. Yeah, I'd like to call this meeting of the town council to order, please, for Thursday, February 10th. If you would please rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Announcements. The Merrimack Town Council would like to extend our deepest sympathies to the family and friends of Chief Joseph R. Devine, who passed away on February 7th at the age of 88. Chief Devine served in the U.S. Army during the Korean War and started his police career as a military police officer when he then moved on and began his law enforcement career for the Johnston, Rhode Island Police Department, retiring as the deputy chief after 17 years of service. Joe served as police chief in St. Johnsbury, Vermont, Claremont, New Hampshire, and starting in 1981 proudly served the town of Merrimack as our chief of police for over 21 years, retiring in September of 2002. In 1992, Chief Devine was recognized for outstanding service to the Merrimack community by the VFW Post Number 86401, when he was chosen as the Police Officer of the Year. In 1990, he also received a special commendation from the town manager for police service, as well as received recognition for Level One accreditation certification in 1999. If we could take just a moment of silence for Joe Devine and his family. Thank you very much. I appreciate it. Upcoming town council meetings, Thursday, February 24th, at 7:00 here in this room will be a regular meeting, and Thursday, March 10th, at 7:00 will be a regular meeting here in this room. Important dates to remember, Wednesday, February 23rd through Friday, March 4th at 5:00 p.m. is the filing period for town offices to be elected at town meeting on April 12th of 2022. And Wednesday, March 9th, at 7:00 p.m. in the All Purpose Room at James Mastrocola Upper Elementary School, located at 26 Babusick Lake Road in Merrimack, is the deliberative session, which is the first of our two sessions of our annual meeting. Paul, did you have any other announcements?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. The library will host AARP Tax Aid Volunteers on Mondays from 9:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m., now through April 11th. This assistance is by appointment only, with multiple slots available at 9:00 a.m., 10:00 a.m., and 11:00 a.m. Please call the library at (603) 424-5021 to make an appointment or for more information on this program. Stoll Road will be closed at Babusick Brook between February 15th and April 1st. The bridge is being repaired following damage that occurred from an oversized truck trying to go through the bridge. Message boards have been in place in the Merrimack and Bedford sides to motorists of the upcoming closures, and we ask for your patience while this bridge gets fixed. A vaccination clinic is scheduled for Wednesday, February 16th, from 1:00 p.m. to 5:00 p.m. at the John O'Leary Adult Community Center located at 4 Church Street. This vaccination site will be administered by New Hampshire Department of Public Health and their partners in the town of Merrimack. Moderna, Johnson &amp; Johnson vaccines are available for all shots for 18 years and up. Pfizer vaccine will be available for all shots of 5 years old and up, as approved by the Center of Disease Control, CDC. Please call (603) 420-1440, or email welfare@merrimacknh.gov. Once again, that's W-E-L-F-A-R-E@merrimacknh.gov to schedule your time and appointment. Thank you.
What was the date of that, again?
Wednesday, February 16th.
February 16th.
And they're doing all shots, first, second, thirds, whatever you need.
Okay. That brings us to comments from the press and public. Anybody that would like to address the council at this point on agenda items, please step forward. Seeing none. We don't have any recognitions, resignations, or retirements, nor do we have any special appointments. However, I would like to ask if we could move new business item number one up to this point before the public hearing, just to go ahead and get that issue taken care of without objection from the council? We'll do that. So we'll move to new business item number one, which is on the second page. A memorial bench donation to Twin Bridge Park submitted by Maureen Quinn-Green, the town council, to consider the donation of a memorial park bench to be installed along the trail system at Twin Bridge Park in honor of Terry Quinn, who passed away last year.
Hello.
Hi.
I see that you have a very full agenda, so I promise I won't take up too much of your time. I wanted to tell you a little bit about my dad, and again, I could talk for a really long time about what a great guy my dad was, but you've got a very full agenda. So my dad, Terry Quinn, moved to Merrimack in 1978, to Belmont Drive, where my mom still lives. He, in our time in Merrimack, he coached many teams for the MYA, including basketball, soccer, and softball. But certainly, his love was coaching the Merrimack Cardinals football team. He coached every team in that organization and served as their president for some time. He was a teacher at Memorial High School in Manchester for 37 years before he retired. And I think probably most interesting for our purposes is he ran a program called Project Brightside through the Merrimack DPW that was funded by Anheuser-Busch, and it was a job training program for underprivileged teenagers living in Merrimack. And they mowed graveyards and lined parks, and they built trails at Wasserman and Twin Bridges. So my family and I think that it would be a really nice tribute to put a park bench down at Twin Bridges, especially since he spent so much time building those trails down there. So, we'd like to put it near the first bridge. Now, we know that bridge is going to be renovated, or there's plans in the works, so we're going to put it at least, you know, a good 25 feet away, so it won't impede on any of the renovations to that bridge. We've picked a spot that has a view of the bridge and the falls, and if you look on the map, the location of that first bridge, and then where we'd like to put the bench. The picture on the farthest to the left is the view of the location that we'd like to put the bench from across the trail, and then the second picture there is taking the picture as if I was sitting on the future bench. So we'd like to buy this recycled plastic bench, in terms of durability and maintenance, and there's also a couple of other memorial benches like it around town. I'm a high school teacher, and when I practiced this presentation today in front of my high school students, they wanted to know why I put Boom Chaka Laka on the bench, and I didn't. It's just the one on their website. We chose the permanent post legs in concrete to make sure that it would stay in one place, and we're going to order it from a company online that is well-reviewed. So upon arrival, approval of the park bench, we'll order it. Our family would like the opportunity to install the bench. My dad was very lucky and had six grandchildren, so we'd like to get the whole family together and install the bench ourselves, and we'd like to put it in in June, when everybody's home from college. Can I answer any questions?
Okay. Anybody have any questions? Or comments? Nancy?
I just want to say, it's such a great legacy.
Oh.
You know, just the whole thing, so congratulations to him and his family.
It was definitely a special spot. We're excited about it.
It's a great idea.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Nancy Murphy?
Yeah, I just want to say, what a wonderful tribute to your dad, and for your kids and his grandchildren to be able to come and put it in. I think it's wonderful, and thank you for thinking of, what a great way to give back to the town and remind us of what he did here, so thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, anybody else? So you're going to, your family's going to put it in, but you work with Matt Casperius or somebody, just to make sure that locations are all good?
Yeah, Matt and I have been emailing back and forth for the last couple of months.
Okay, I figured as much, but I wanted to bring that out in the open, just so we didn't think people were going to go randomly place benches any place.
Yes.
And we don't want that to happen. We appreciate you coming here to talk to us about it. If there's no further questions, I entertain a motion to accept the donation.
I move we approve the, we move the approval of the donation of the park bench by the family.
Second. Motion made by Finley and seconded by Lon Woods to accept the memorial park bench installation at Twin Bridge Park.
I should have elaborated a bit more, yes.
Thank you very much. I appreciate your time.
Okay, so we'll call for a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Okay, there's more.
Aye, any opposed or abstaining? Now we're good. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
So with our thanks to the Quinn family, that's a great opportunity.
He'd be real proud of you.
He probably is.
Actually, I think I remember him from my Cardinal days.
Yeah?
So yeah, going way back. Now that I saw his picture, I'm like, okay.
Yeah, you go way back.
Long, long time ago.
You're still a young guy.
Oh, yeah.
Well, not quite, but.
Wouldn't push it.
Rooster, maybe, but. That brings us to public hearings. We have several public hearings tonight. The first one is kind of an all-encompassing conglomeration talking about the operating budget and warrant articles, of which there's a bunch of different items, and so do you want to present on them first, and then we'll open the public hearing in general, Paul? Or do you think we should open each one?
I think we.
Open and close each one?
I think we should basically go in order and open and close each one as an individual. Take the operating budget, then talk about the collective bargaining agreement, and go from there. And the proposed issuance of debt for ladder and wastewater, we have separate public hearings for those.
Right.
So we'll go there, and then the charter article, which we have.
Okay, so you're going to give us a presentation then on the first one, which is the proposed municipal operating budget, and then we'll open the public hearing?
Yep.
For any input? When you're ready.
Thank you. I feel like I'm going to fall out. Yeah, don't do that. We don't want to do that. So the first public hearing is on the budget, and as you know, the, I presented my budget to the town council over the month of January, that's the department, with the departments, to the town council, and this is really the town council's public hearing to the public for the budget. The budget will pass to the town council tonight. Once we go after the public hearing, it'll pass to the town council, and then it'll go to deliberative session, and then it'll go to the voters. So I just want to go through really some, the estimated 2022 tax rate summary. As you know, we break our operating budget, our budget, out into several components. There's the general fund, capital reserve fund deposits, other capital, roads, resurfacing, sidewalks, expansion. This year, we have a SAFER grant. We talked about a Phase 5 bond for wastewater, a bond for the ladder truck, and then we have what we call self-supporting funds. These self-supporting funds are items like wastewater treatment, which is an enterprise fund that user pays fees, and then media fund, which is cable franchise fees, and we have some other small self-supporting funds, such as outside detail for police and fire. Library trustees have some money that would be considered self-supporting funds. So as, if everything would to pass that is presented tonight, the total appropriations would be $50,245,877. The revenues are $31,265,492. We always have overlay, and overlay is for abatement, then veterans credits for the veterans, the $500, and then we have $4,000 for 100% disabled veterans. And to be raised by taxes would be $20,172,465. Our townwide property valuation, we're projecting to be over $5 billion. The total rate would be $4.01, or 19 cent increase over the 2021-22 actual tax rate of $3.82 for the town. So it's around a 4, 4.85% increase. Heard today inflation's running about 7%, so it is in line with inflation that, from the prior year, we tried to keep it as much. And some of the expenses in the general fund, the very first line, general fund operating, are due to contract raises and those expenses, as well as some other things, but I'll get into more detail about what's actually in that number. So the next slide is just the summary, broken out in a little more detail, and it shows the number, what I like to keep is the numbers on the right. So the general fund difference is $1,824,677. I'd like you to keep that in mind, because that's the number that all the backup that I'll be showing goes, adds up to. Self-supporting funds, like I said, there's a decrease of $176,000, but that's also offset with the decrease in revenue of $176,000. So what I'm really talking about is the general fund portion of this, which talks to the tax rate. So on the appropriation side, we have computer supplies that are increasing $21,000, sand and salt is increasing $61,000, and we talked about that, and the price of sand and salt is going up from almost 75% to 100% markup on sand and salt for what we were paying last year. General insurance increase, about $30,000. Patrol vehicle, $21,000. Solid waste tipping fees, recycling's actually down $20,000 with this new contract, but our disposal costs, because we had to sign a new contract, are up about $58,000, so it's a net of $38,000. Operating supplies are up about $26,000, and those are cleaning supplies and things of that sort, which we're seeing about a 10% increase across the board. Postage is up. We have, believe, four elections next year, so we have no idea what our mail-ins are going to be. We're just guesstimating that postage is going to, we're only going to spend about $9,000 more in postage, and with mail-ins. And then, of course, we're seeing utility increases for water, gas, electric, of $17,850. That isn't because our rate's going up, that's because our usage is going up. Our kilowatt usage for electricity, our kilowatt, our therm usage for gas is going up, so that's the increase of $17,000 there. Maintenance of office equipment, that's $52,450. If you remember prior, the prior meeting we had at the end of this January, the council cut about $67,000 out of that maintenance of equipment, and that maintenance of equipment is for our contracts, such as our contract with Nashua for the 800 megahertz system. It's a user-fee contract. That would be included in there, things of that sort. All my contracts for office equipment, if, for software support, things of that sort, that's what that line item's for. Then communication equipment is going up $827,000, and that's a significant increase, but remember, we came in front of the council about a year ago and talked about an 800-megahertz system for police and fire for dispatch, and the council's first phase was to buy the radios. We bought the radios, we hoped that that was the only phase we needed to go through, but you, but doing testing and going through the system, we found out that we need to upgrade and put our own facility in, in the town of Merrimack, and that's to costs of $762,000 to build the building and equip it out, so that we would have 95% coverage, which is very important, 95% coverage in the town with our dispatch radio system. We were getting prices, and the total cost for the projects was about $1.4 million. We were getting prices in the 1.1 to 1.3 million dollar range, and they weren't guaranteeing us $95,000. They said, well, it might work, or it might not work.
95% coverage.
95% coverage. So when Nashua said, you can use our system, and Motorola said, we'll guarantee 95%, that's when we came in front of the council. So that's for the building, $762,000. And then we need to upgrade some fire radios, about $36,000, because right now, the fire department has no spares, and they get damaged, they get dropped, things of that sort. So Nashua's been nice enough to give us loaners when we need it, but I don't know how long Nashua's going to be generous with that, and so fire wants to start building up kind of a little bit of reserve for radios. And then highway, that's $28,000, and that's for a base radio system. They're not on the 800-megahertz system. They're still on what the, it's a two, it's like a two-way walkie-talkie communication system, where the base unit is at the highway garage. They push a button, there's an antenna, it goes out and hits the truck, and then they communicate back and forth that way. So they're not on any system, dispatch system that we have, they're on their own two-way. And eventually, that would be an upgrade, but to the 800-megahertz, but that is not, that's down the road, that isn't in the next year or two, and so that's why we're looking at upgrading the base unit in highway. Vehicle fuel's going up about $30,000. Equipment, maintenance of our vehicles, about 20. Field maintenance is about 20. Legal expense is 30. Elections, I talked about four elections, that's going up to about $19,000. Outside services, about $23,000. Miscellaneous is the balancing number, that's $21,000, almost 22. Staffing, compensated absence is going down, $22,000 around. Union wages, including steps, is going up, $231,000. Those are our contractual agreements that were already voted on and ratified by the community. We had a 53rd week of payroll in the current year that we're in, where we don't see that happening again, so that's about a $278,000 savings. Education uniforms, going up 10 and 13. The SAFER grant is four additional firefighters, $396,000 we're projecting for those four additional firefighters for next year. That is 100% reimbursed from the SAFER program, the federal government, however, we have to gross appropriate, so we have to put this in our appropriations. We talked about higher, new highway equipment operator one position, $79,000. Dispatcher for overnight, $79,000. Overtime of fire, that is what we, what the council agreed to with the SAFER grant, to going to 11 personnel on staff, as long as the budget supports that. Doing our calculations, we figured we'd need about another $29,000 to make that happen next year. A part-time cleaner at the highway garage, we remember the town voted in a budget, I want to say almost five years ago, to build a new highway garage for $3.3 million, and we're trying to keep the building up and cleaned properly, so that the town's investment in that money. Part-time code enforcement, because of all the building that is going on in town and all the building permits, we needed to bring in some help to help do the inspections, and that's not department inspections, that's the individuals, or, you know, I'm putting on a deck, I'm putting up an addition, that's just to get those inspections done without having to take guys out of the big apartments when they're, when they're in there for a day or two doing all their inspections. It'd be kind of hard to pull them out, send them off for a onesie-twosie job, and then bring them back in to do the inspection, so hiring a part-time person just to handle those kinds of inspections. And then the council, last time, voted in to make the part-time position at the town court tax collector a full-time position for $40,400. Capital reserve funds has some increases of $67,500. We'll discuss that when we discuss that portion of the public hearing individually. But health insurance decrease of $34,625. Infrastructure decrease of $80,000, that was in paving and sidewalks and things of that sort, and streetlights, we're seeing an $8,000 decrease. Net savings of $123,000. Total general fund increase is $1,824,677. Remember, I told you to keep that number in mind? That's the number. So it's $1,824,677. We do, even though we're here to talk about the budget and the appropriations, we do talk about revenues, and we're doing some increases in the planning board of about $11,000. Current use, $75,000. Building permits, $35,000. Restaurant licenses, $12,000. Ambulance fees, $65,000. Decreases, we talked about the franchise fee at $250,000. Interest is decreased about $75,900. Once again, not knowing, I heard today that the feds are going to make a substantial increase to the rate. What is substantial? 25 basis points, 50 basis points, 10 basis points?
Compared to where it is now, it could be anything.
It's zero, yeah, it's at zero, so anything substantial with that. So, but we feel that interest, once again, we're looking at a decrease from what we had budgeted this year, because they were supposed to raise it last year, or the year we're in, and they haven't. Tax bill interest, admin charges, solid waste, and miscellaneous, so revenues decreased about $176,559. Then we had use of fund balance of $984,500. We're doing some paving at $160,000. Capital reserve fund deposit of $145,000. What I'm taking out of that is the DPW base radio and Wasserman Park roof repair of 28 and 32.5, respectively, so total capital projects of $365,000, for a total used reduction on our fund balance of $1,350. That's a reduction of about $300,000, and that $300,000 reduction in fund balance equates to the 53rd week of payroll, that we added to last year's fund balance to pay for that. So all this adds up to $4.01 increase. I'll be more than happy to take any questions.
Okay, we'll open the public hearing at 7:29 on the operating budget as presented. Anybody that has any questions or comments should come forward at this point.
While people run up to the microphone, I would just like to say, this budget does not include any raises for non-union employees.
That was the one thing we still had to do.
We still have to, we still have to do. And I have, after we close, I'll give you that number.
Okay, well, seeing nobody coming forward, we'll close the public hearing at 7:30.
I have some good news and bad news for everybody. So I'm proposing a 2.5% increase for non-union employees, and that's roughly a $119,000 appropriation add to the budget. However, I reviewed our health insurance numbers that we had, and I believe with our current census that we have, we can garner about $102,000 worth of savings in health insurance. So for general fund?
Beyond what you talked about earlier in the budget?
Yep, beyond, yes, beyond it. So for, for non-union, the wage increase for general fund would be $114,443. Health insurance savings would be $98,500, for a net increase to the appropriations of $15,943. And then, of course, in wastewater and media, we have some non-union positions as well, and in wastewater, non-union raises was equate to $4,842. Health insurance decrease would be $1,000. And for media, the non-union increase in wages would be $4,928, with a decrease in health insurance of $1,500. This would bake our general fund, our appropriations, sorry, not our general fund, but our total appropriations that would be voted on in the operating budget warrant, $36,218,840. Let me say that again.
Okay.
And it would not affect the tax rate. The tax rate would still be down of $4.01.
Four dollars and a penny.
Yes. If everything passed, it'd be $4.01. Yes. If everything passed, it'd be four dollars and one cent.
Barbara, you had a question?
Yeah. So how did you develop the number of the 2.5 percent raise?
2.5 percent raise was what we offered to Teamsters as a cost of living adjustment, was 2.5 percent. I have three, four unions in contract at 2 percent. Non-union does not get the benefit of some of the extra bonuses, or not bonuses, but extra benefits of being in the union such as education stipend and longevity stipends and things of that sort.
Uniforms.
Uniforms, boots, allowances, things of that sort. So to give them a little bit extra, an extra half a percent. And so that's how I came up with the 2.5 when I was looking at it. I wish I could give everybody a 5 percent raise, but I gotta be honest and look at what that, you know, we got residents in this town, we got 26,000, 27,000 residents that I have to look at for. So with the 2.5 percent raise, I felt that was fair and equitable to everybody. And being able to actually look at our census and the way our mix is changing and our health insurance census, it just made it that much easier palatable for me to look at. I looked at a 3 percent raise and it was 150,000 dollars. And honestly, I could not in good conscience come forward at that time to raise, you know, the tax rate that much more. We are going up. If everything passes, we're going up 39 cents over last year. So it just, for me, it's, it's, it was, it was more palatable and fair and equitable for everybody, not just the residents, but even the employees.
Any other questions by the council?
Comments? Andy?
Just clarification, the four dollars and one cent, that's assuming even the proposed debt that we're gonna have public hearings on, all of that passes?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes. It, it might be four dollars and two cents. It all depends where you fall in the realm. You know, it could be 15,000 dollars for interest on the ladder truck bond could push us over a little bit. It could, instead of, you know, whatever, four dollars, 4.01, it could be 4.014 or 5, which would push us to 4.2. It depends where you are in that calculation, but I would have to assume it's gonna be four dollars and one cent right now, is what I looked at.
Plus or minus a fraction.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll give you a penny, Paul.
Give me a penny, thanks. And this is just estimated. So values could come in higher, values come in higher. In September, when we look at our revenues, we could, we could see significant interest in change our numbers and that number could be lower. Or we could see our registrations not hitting where we thought they were gonna be and then the rate would be a little bit higher. So, no. There are a lot of factors that go into setting the final tax rate. This is just an estimate.
At this point. So you've made a recommendation of a two and a half percent non-union wage increase, which I presume we need to act upon.
Yes, you would need to act upon on that and then you would need to act upon.
So does anybody have any other questions, suggestions or thoughts on non-union wage increase? Nancy Harrington?
I agree with the calculations that you did. I think your rationale was well-presented. And I think it is reasonable. And you're right. We got word today that, what, 7.5 percent increase? We can't do that. We'd love to. We'd love to give the three the five. But again, we already have contracts in place. And so we have to be equitable with those as well. So I would agree with the 2.5.
Anybody else? Any other comments or suggestions? Seeing none, can we get a motion to put a two and a half percent increase in for the non-union employees?
So moved.
Moved by Nancy Harrington, seconded by Barbara Healy. If there's no other discussion, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or abstaining? That passes 700.
I need a motion to accept the 102,000 dollar reduction in health insurance. It's a 102,000 dollar reduction in health insurance.
Moved by Finley?
Yes.
To accept the 102,000 dollar reduction in health insurance costs, seconded by Nancy, oh, Andy, seconded by Andy. If there's no further discussion on that, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed or abstaining? That passes 700.
And now I need one more motion.
Well, all right.
To move 36,218,840 dollars to the warrant.
So moved.
Moved by Nancy Harrington, seconded by Nancy Murphy to move 36,218,840 dollars as the municipal operating budget to the warrant. If there's no other comments, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed or abstaining? That passes 700.
Thank you.
Do we now need to open the public hearing on the budget? Or did we do that already?
No, we already did that.
We did that.
Oh, well, did we close it?
Yes, we did.
At 7:30.
You didn't take me long to forget that, did it?
Usually Tom's keeping us in line.
I'm just trying to make sure I cover all the bases, so I'm getting you guys to remind me.
I thought about that too as I was talking. Did he close the public hearing as I'm presenting?
All right. So we're on track. Now the question is collective bargaining agreements?
Yes.
Do these rest, do other people need to stay now?
I want them to stay.
Some of them are here for other discussions, but they can leave if they see fit.
People can leave if they're so inclined. They'll just be jealous because you get to go home early.
That's it, yes.
The ones that need to stay will stay.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Good night, everyone.
And, and I do, I do wanna say, this budget was a total team effort. You know, they're here supporting the budget going forward and they're in total support of this budget that the council was bringing forward to, to the voters. They are, they're, they're behind it and it will meet their needs and it was not and is not a lot of wants in there. There was a lot of, we need this to do this. And they knew that going in, so they, they're very, very thankful of the raise for the non-union as well as presenting the budget as is. So collective bargaining agreements. We have one collective bargaining agreement that will be on the ballot this year. And that's our Teamsters Local 633 contract. It's a two-year contract.
And this group is?
Our, this group is our members of our DPW supervisory group for solid waste, highway, equipment maintenance and wastewater.
Okay.
And some, and the secretaries.
All right, thank you.
So this, what we negotiated and actually have a tentative agreement on is that life insurance benefits would increase for spouse and children. The spouse would go from 1,000 to 10,000 and children from 500 to 5,000. Their wages in the first year would be 2.5 percent. In the second year would be 3 percent. In the first year, there's an additional 48 cents that will be added to the base salary rate. Now, this, this group of individuals, these 14 individuals, do not have steps. So when they come in to get, when they, when they get hired, they get placed in the range on a pay scale. And really, it's hard for them to move up on that pay scale. So one of the, one of the items that they were concerned about is that, you know, we all come in and we all take the job at between the low to mid. Very rarely do we bring somebody in mid to high. But we can never get above the mid to high, even though we've been here 10, 15, 20 years. So one way to get them to move up the scale was to give them this extra 48 cents. And this was negotiated. I had, I, I was looking at giving this in a different kind of way. And the union said, nope, we want it fair. We want everybody to get the same amount. I said, I can agree to that. So everybody's getting a 48 cent increase. It equates to about 1,000 dollars in the year. So it's, it's 1,000 dollars to get, move them up the scale and to the mid-range of the scale. Also, wage rates for employees that were hired after July 1st, 2000, before July 1st, 2018 are permitted to exceed the top of the scale. And that's because we told them that we're not moving the top of the scale.
We're not what?
We're not moving the top of the scale. The top of the scale is the top of the scale. Usually what we used to do is if they got a 2 percent increase, top of the scale increased 2 percent and then they would increase 3 percent. We said the top of the scale is staying where the top of the scale is. So they had some concerns with that and we said, okay, anybody hired before July 1st, 2018 would be able to exceed the top of the scale for the time being. And then they, we discussed and it is true, these gentlemen are on call 52 weeks a year. They take a rotation at wastewater to be on call every, every, every week. And some of those weeks have holidays. And what was brought to my attention is that if they're on call on a holiday and it's their week and their family's having Christmas dinner and, you know, hooks it, it's kinda hard for them to go to their Christmas dinner because they're on call because they have to be at the site in so many minutes. If something's needed, they need to be near a computer or things of that sort. So what I said is that, yes, that, that, that is, that does put a strain on the holidays. So if you're on call, I will give you an extra two hours of your regular pay to, on those, those 10 observed holidays, to be on call for that period. And then the last thing was, the town is going to provide safety glasses, sometimes prescription safety glasses. If anybody who wears glasses and ever had to put on those safety glasses on top, you gotta put your glasses on, then you gotta make sure the other ones fit over it. And it's cumbersome to walk around the plant like that for me. For these guys to work in it, I understood that. So what we said is that we will provide an allowance for safety glasses once every three years of 125,000 dollars.
125 dollars?
125 dollars, yes, 125 dollars.
Good catch. Just checking there.
It's a Freudian slip. It's age.
I was wondering if we were paying it.
That's right, yeah. I saw, I saw everybody nodding off. No, 125 dollars once every three years for safety glasses, yeah. And we, it's a, instead of being a nightmare bookkeeping, we said, it's going to be, we're gonna start in July 2022. And for that fiscal year is 125 dollars. If somebody comes in July 1st, 2023, they don't get the prescription safety glasses, we'll give you a pair. It's once every three years and it's only in the year. So this is an allowance that's once every three years for 125 dollars for the, for the prescription safety glasses if so needed. It actually does not include the clerk typist dispatcher, which we don't have filled. A secretary, secretary scale operator are also, are excluded from the allowance. So it's only people who would be working on the floor or working on equipment that might need the safety glasses that would, would qualify for this. And then what I said to, as well, when we negotiated this is, is they get boot allowance every year. I said, you have to satisfy your boot allowance. But in the years 2022, 2025, 2028, et cetera, if you have any leftover boot allowance, you can also put that towards your safety glasses. So that if somebody has all these special prescriptions and needs this and that, 125 will get you the basic. If you need something additional, you can use some of your boot allowance. But you have to buy your boots first. And that's important because they need good footwear and good safety shoes. And they agreed to that. So in costing this out, first year's cost is 49,754 dollars or roughly one cent, one, one cent on the tax rate. And in year two, it's less than one cent on the tax rate. It's 35,555 dollars. Once again, this is a tentative agreement that was negotiated between the two parties. It really, once it gets approved, which you ratified last week, it actually moves to the warrant. But wanna, if anybody wanted to ask questions about why we did what we did, that's why we hold the public hearing on it.
Okay. So we'll open the public hearing at 7:46. Anybody that would like to make any comments or whatever on the local 633 contract proposal that's been agreed to by them and us on the council, but needs to be approved by the voters, come up now to speak or ask your questions. Did I open it at 6:40?
Six.
7:46?
Yeah.
It's now 7:47 and nobody's approaching the mic, so we'll close the public hearing on the, on the Teamsters local contract. Finley?
It's a question that I've had from the first time I read it, but it was such a paltry thing I didn't ask. But it's the 500 and 100. Is it if you have more than one child, you only get 100 dollars?
No, no. It was 500 dollars was any child over six months. If the child was under six months, it was 100 dollars. That's what the life insurance policy read. And that was back when it first was implemented. These rates haven't changed at all for years. So as you know, everything's going up, but definitely the cost, God forbid you have to bury a loved one. It's, it's a thousand dollars, even, even 5,000 will not. It'll help, but it won't.
It won't necessarily cover.
Cover the whole thing.
Sure.
All right.
Okay. It did, it did seem a little strange.
And I never asked because it was 100 bucks. I'm going, and I knew we were moving to the new, but I thought I'd ask today.
But that's why. The other thing I was remiss to say is that these were the parameters the council gave me to negotiate and came within the parameters of what the council, at the very beginning. For, for everybody at home, council sits down with myself and human resource director and gives us parameters to negotiate a contract, including how much, what there were, you know, the cost of a contract would be, dollar amount. And this is within those, those, the amount that you gave us to negotiate.
So we're looking for a motion to move this or do we, you've already moved it to the warrant?
It is, it is on the warrant already. It's just more of a public.
Here. Okay.
Yeah.
Great. All right. Next is the capital reserve deposits for general fund?
Yep. So before I start, in years past, we used to have capital reserve purchases in the budget. Excuse me. A year ago, the DRA came to me when I was still finance director and said that you don't have to do that anymore. Matter of fact, if you do wanna keep it up, you would have to do it at individual warrant articles. And it would defeat the purpose of every one of the capital reserve funds that we have as the town council, as agents to expend. So what happened was is that we made a change on these purchases. They used to be included in budgets, they're no longer included in the budget. But I'd like to speak to the, the amounts and what projects we plan on doing next year so people have an idea of what we're spending for these deposits that we're putting into these capital reserves. Because they used to be able to see it in the budget. Now they don't see it in the budget. All they see is 100,000 dollars for solid waste. What do we get in, in solid waste for, you know, for 100,000 dollars? So right now, we're looking at, the computer equipment capital reserve fund, looking at purchasing Microsoft 360, we're moving towards it. And that's at a cost of about 46,000 dollars. Communications recorder is 25,000. Library is looking to upgrade their elevator and HVAC at 100,000 dollars each. Then we have some highway stuff like bridge replacement on US 3, stormwater. We have the woodland drive improvements at 375,000 dollars. We're budgeting for that. Later on in the program, or later on in the agenda, there's a, gonna be a petition bond that came in for that area of about 3 million dollars. But we were planning on doing a 375,000 dollar project and doing this project over several years. The residents of the area got together, which is their right, in the, in the town, town of Merrimack. And they got 25 signatures so that it could be put on the ballot to see if some, if we'd approve a petition bond. And for 3 million, but I do wanna point that out that we do have money set aside for that in a capital reserve fund. And then depot, street boat ramp repairs of 150. South Hegan River Trail, hopefully that will be the final, final piece of it and we can actually start building that South Hegan River Trail. That was tap money. That's kind of our portion of the, of the balance. It was an 80/20 project. We're gonna spend out of road infrastructure capital reserve over a million dollars. A million 23,034. And we've been saving for these projects through every year, putting money into these capital reserves. And then we do have some highway equipment, a new message board because the one that we bought long ago is starting to fail. Trailer for the Brian trailer, athletic field groomer, pickup truck, tractor and two six-wheel dump trucks. Looking to spend about 565,000 dollars out of highway equipment. And then DW, we're looking to do some overlay on, from Greeley Street to Bedford Road as much as we can for 200,000 dollars. Solid waste, we're looking to buy a pickup truck with a plow. Total general fund expenditures would be 2,104,000 dollars. And then sewer fund has several projects they're looking to do. And then sewer fund has several projects they're looking to do, looking for some pump stations of, of an explorer. Our crane truck, which is circa nineteen seventy, I believe, looking to replace that for a hundred and twenty-five. And the reason why this crane truck is so important is it lifts grates and other heavy, heavy items that it would take three, four, or five people to lift up and it prevents back injuries. So that's a vital piece of equipment when you're looking to lift grates and, and plates and things of that sort. They're looking to spend about six hundred and twenty. So the money coming out next year, we're projecting is about two point seven million dollars out of the capital reserve fund. So I just wanted to give that.
Background.
So because when we look at it, we're putting in one point nine million dollars, one, one million nine hundred and forty-seven thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars into the general fund capital reserve funds. Ambulance is increasing fifteen thousand dollars and the main part of, of why that's going up, I think everybody knows is that everything's going up when it comes to vehicles lately. And we're thinking fifteen thousand dollars, we were hoping to increase it to a hundred and fifteen because we have two ambulances coming due in the next two to three years. We're purchasing one out of this current budget, current year budget, which is twenty-one, twenty-two. But in two or three years, we have the other two coming due. And then highway equipment increased from four hundred, four twenty-five. I believe when, over the summer, when highway came in to ask for the six-wheel dump truck and even the dump trucks, they were more expensive than we even thought. I believe the six-wheel dump truck was like a hundred and ninety thousand and the two other dump trucks came in roughly around a hundred and eighty thousand dollars. And we were only budgeting at about a hundred and seventy, a hundred and seventy-five. So we figured we need to increase the highway capital, highway equipment capital reserve twenty-five thousand dollars. Property evaluations, we're increasing that slightly, modestly, two thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars. But that's to get us where we need to be with the revaluation that occurs every five years. We were projecting about seventy, eighty thousand dollars for that. This last year was up over, close to a hundred thousand dollars. So we're trying to get back to where we need to be at a hundred thousand dollars. Solid waste disposal, we have bought a lot of equipment in solid waste disposal over the last couple of years. So we felt we could back that off twenty-five thousand dollars. And then road infrastructure, we're increasing fifty thousand dollars. And that's our sixty-seven thousand, two hundred and fifty dollar number that I presented when we talked about the budget that I tell you, I talked to you later about. There's the number sixty-seven, two hundred and fifty dollars. And that's it for general fund capital reserve funds. I'll be more than happy to answer any questions.
You may have any questions on the capital reserve funds? Is this another public hearing?
Yes, it is.
So we'll open the public hearing at seven fifty-five and invite anybody that has any questions to come forward. You've made, you made a very nice detail there of what else is going in. This is a article on the, on the warrant.
Separate article on the warrant.
To put one point nine three seven two fifty into capital reserve fund.
Actually, one million nine hundred and forty-seven, two fifty.
Oh, okay.
Got to put milfoil in there too.
Yeah.
Milfoil is an expendable, expendable capital, expendable capital fund. It's not, it's not a capital reserve fund, it's an expendable trust fund because it's an expense.
Okay. Well, seeing nobody else coming up forward to the public hearing discussion, we'll close the public hearing at seven fifty-six. And we need a motion to move this to the warrant?
Yes, please.
I, I move that we move the capital reserve fund deposits of one million nine hundred and forty-seven thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars. I move that to the warrant.
For the general fund, capital reserve funds, right. Motion made by Finley, seconded by Barbara, by Lon, seconded by Lon Woods. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, we'll call for a vote, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, seven zero zero. Any, any against or abstaining? I just kind of jumped the gun on that. That's seven zero zero. I figure once we had seven ayes, anyway. Okay, capital reserve funds for wastewater treatment fund.
So.
W T F fund.
Wastewater Treatment Fund.
Wastewater Treatment Fund, fund?
Fun, fun.
Fun, fun.
It's a fun, fun. It's the sewer infrastructure improvements. We've been putting five hundred thousand dollars in a year, it's five hundred thousand dollars. The reason why this is broken out separately is because this is enterprise fund. It's a sewer user fee, it's not on the tax rate. It, it affects only the people who use the sewer system and it's built into the rate that we, we projected this year. It's a separate warrant article because it's a separate, it goes into a separate.
Separate line item.
Line item, separate user fee account, separate enterprise fund.
Now, so before we open the public hearing, this, the sewer infrastructure improvements, we've been voting on bonds to upgrade the sewer system. That's not considered part of the infrastructure improvements or?
It, it is part of the infrastructure improvements, but those are separate. Those, if we wanted to, we could fund them out of this, but those are additional, you know, millions of dollars. And we try to keep these projects to be, you know, pickup trucks, crane trucks. We, we, we have some money coming out for some of the smaller pump stations that we're going to do and that would come out of this, this capital reserve fund. The other thing is, is when they, if they ever do the F E F return pike widening project, we, we have a, we have a culvert that goes underneath the highway. That's one of our interceptors to bring South Merrimack to our plant. Well, if they ever do the project, we have to either relocate our interceptor, which we're hoping that, that they will be moving the creek and bridge, you know, the, the river back to the original location and letting us continue with that, but we would have to pay for that portion of the expansion of the culvert on either side when they do that. So that would come out of this fund as well. So those kinds of projects and, and some of the projects are five, six, seven hundred thousand dollars, but they're coming out of this where we're not saying, okay, let's up everything together in a bond and let's do another bond for three, four million dollars. We're, we're trying, trying to look at where it is. When we set the rates, when we look at the increases and set the rates, this is already calculated into moving forward in those rates so that we can do some of these projects in the future.
Okay, do you, you have a question before we open the public hearing? Yes, Barbara.
So since DOT is touching the highway and widening it, which now affects our interceptor, why aren't they paying for it?
I could explain that for you, but that's why Kyle's here. So I'm going to let Kyle explain it. I, I, I can explain it, but it's, it's not tricky. It's just, even when we do a project with utilities, like the poles, EverSource, we call them up, like when we did Turkey Hill, we called EverSource up and said, you have to move your poles and it's on them to move the poles. Utilities is on the utility provider to move their utilities out of the way of these projects. Since we're the, we're considered a utility provider with our sewer line, that is why we have to do that section of it.
However, however, we wouldn't, we wouldn't be touching it.
It doesn't matter, they wouldn't touch, they wouldn't touch a utility pole if we didn't wind in a road either.
Yeah, you, Paul, you, you said it exactly right. It's similar to like when we did the roundabout project, the utility poles needed to be relocated because they're in our right of way at no cost to the utilities if we have a project. It happens on all of our bridge projects as well. We call the utility companies, whether it's EverSource, Comcast, Fairpoint, Liberty for the gas, all of them. They're required to move their utilities, like in the case of the upcoming US three bridge, they have to move them out of the way for us to build the bridge and then they move them back afterwards. So the sewer to the state is nothing but a utility. And we're in their right of way, so we're required to pay to move it. The, the good news is on this project because, because we're the municipality and we're working with DOT on the design, that they're certainly taking our needs into account. And we're going to come up with the best option for the state and the town together.
Thank you.
Sure thing.
Okay. So thanks, Kyle. We open the public hearing at eight oh two for the, what are we talking about? Sewer, the sewer infrastructure improvements, capital reserve fund deposits of five hundred thousand dollars. And while they're, while they're, while we're waiting for them to come up to the mic, thanks for that. I even went back and saw that you had talked about, we're spending like six hundred and twenty thousand this year out of that fund. So we obviously need to keep it going. There's plenty of small side projects that have nothing to do with the wastewater treatment plant upgrade that need to be maintained along the system. So if there's nobody else coming to talk to the capital reserve funds for the sewer, we'll close the public hearing at eight oh three and see what the council's preferences. Should we move to, move five hundred thousand for the sewer capital reserve funds to the warrant?
I'll, I'll move this five hundred thousand dollar sewer infrastructure improvements to the ballot.
To the warrant.
To the warrant, I'm sorry, thank you, Paul.
Motion made by Finley, seconded by Barbara Healy. All those, if there's no other comments or questions, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, any opposed or abstaining, that passes seven zero zero. Did that cover what we needed to at that point?
Yeah, we just have one more thing and that's the charter amendment. The other two, the, the proposed issuance of debt and for the ladder trucking in the wastewater treatment facility. The reason why they had separate warrant articles is because when we, if we go out to bond, our legal count, bond, there's a bond legal council that we have to go through to make sure that we noticed it properly, we held the public hearing properly and that we followed all the rules and laws of bonding if these do pass. That, that's why they're on a separate item itself because that's what the legal council has told us. Is keep them separate, make sure you do, take them separate, don't take them as part of your operating budget. But we do have one other thing I want to talk about is we talked a little bit about Wednesday, the ninth, March ninth at seven P M. in the James Master Cola Upper Elementary, Upper, Upper Elementary School All Purpose Room will be the deliberative session. And voting will be on Tuesday, April twelfth from seven A M. to seven P M. at the three locations that we've used in the past. James Master Cola Upper Elementary School, St. John Newman Church and Merrimack Middle School. So the polling locations have not changed.
And we're not expecting anybody's polling locations to change?
No.
And they can contact the Secretary of State's office if they don't know where they're supposed to go?
They can contact the Secretary of State's office, they can contact, our, our town clerk tax collector will help them out. They can contact the supervisors of the checklist. They, there's several opportunities for them to.
And there are links on our website to help.
Yes, they are.
So don't, don't think you don't know where to go, you can always find out. Lon Woods?
Somewhere in my immediate past, was there a snow date that perhaps the public would like to be aware of?
Yes, for deliberative session, right now, it would be Friday, the eleventh of March. So, so we're, we're the ninth and the eleventh. So that week in March, residents of Merrimack, get ready because the school has their deliberative session on Tuesday, the eighth. We have ours on Thursday, the ninth. Their snow date, Wednesday, the ninth. Their snow date is Thursday, the tenth, and our snow date is Thursday, the eleventh. So pray for no snow the week of March eighth.
Do that all winter long.
Yes, well, I know, but I'm just saying, so it's a very busy week. This is one of those times every five or, five or so years that we all are on the same week and it's all based on the way the calendar plays out.
Thank you, Lon, that's, that was a good point to bring out and to add in the information about the school district as well.
So the next is, is a charter article amendment that we brought forward. I heard back from the Secretary of State. This is what was sent up to the Secretary of State basically to further, the town council may appoint up to two alternate members for a one-year term to our trustee of trust funds. That is what the town council brought forward. That is what we sent to the Secretary of State that was been approved, that has been approved by the Secretary of State and DRA and the Attorney General with one small modification. So I'll, I will talk about the modification after, if we have anybody coming up to the mic to discuss this adding alternates to the trust funds. Because really that's what this article does. This is what we're amending in our charter is to amend to allow the town council to appoint alternate members to the trust, trustee of trust funds. The trustee of trust funds are voted on by the public. There's three trustee of trust funds that are voted on by the public and they're one every, every three-year appointments. The alternates that we've, one of the trustees asked us, the council to move forward is that those would be appointed by the town council and they're appointed for a one-year term only. So they would have to be reappointed every one-year term. And one of the reasons why it kind of got brought to light with the passing of Jalk Balco is that they, there, there were three and now there's two. And it was, it's more for continuity of, of the trust funds and keeping people involved in case somebody doesn't want to run again for reelection. If you have an alternate, they may be interested in, in running for that seat, those kinds of deals. And that's why we were presented with asking us to see if, if the town council would be offering this to be able to do alternate members. So that, that is what's really being talked about in the public hearing. I'll explain.
Are we having a public hearing?
You have to have a public hearing for this as well.
Was that noticed?
Yes, it was.
Oh, okay. So you, you've put the wording up there, we'll open the public hearing at eight oh nine. Anybody that's interested in talking about this addition to the town charter or modification to the town charter, please come forward at this time. Okay. So I'm going to say it's eight ten and we're going to close the public hearing.
Okay. The modification that the Attorney General and I discussed, and I told him about your appointment process and how you go about appointing people where you, you give them thirty days, any interested parties, thirty days to come up and put a letter of request in or a letter of interest in and then interviewing them and things of that sort. So the Attorney General was very happy with our process. However, he said that what he would like to see is to say the words, further, the board may recommend, the town council may appoint up to two alternate members for one-year term. So basically what he's trying to, what the Attorney General was trying to say there is that the board or the trustees, he's calling the board, the trustee board will recommend to the town council and then the town council may appoint. Not that you have to appoint the person they recommend, but you may appoint the person they recommend. So, and I, like I said, I explained it that the chair sits with the vice chair and chair and they have the meeting and they, they have the interviews if there's more than one person wanting to do it and they're not a known commodity to the town. They, they have these, these interviews and he was very, yes, but he said that, that would make it, the language in the RSA that, that talks about the trustee of trust funds is kind of open-ended. So he said that would be better if you could just say, further, the board may recommend, the town council may appoint up to two alternate members for one year. It should actually read, the board may, may recommend to the town council. He left out the word to, but I'm, I just copied that verbatim for what he sent to me. But it should be, further, the board may, the board may recommend to, the word TO, to the town council may appoint up to two alternate members.
So, so the board may recommend to the town council and the town council may appoint up to two?
Yes.
Or something to that.
Yes, something of that sort, yes. Okay, so we could say the board may recommend to the town council, comma, and the town council may appoint up to two alternate members for one year. Barbara?
Question. So does that bind us in any way to have to accept the recommendations of the board if for what? the recommendations of the board, if for whatever reason we want to go through the usual process?
That's why you used the word "may" instead of "shall."
Yeah.
Yeah, no, it does not, even if, even if, even if, even if the vice chair and chair bring an appointee to the board, or the council, for any board, the council has the right to say, "We don't want this person."
Okay.
And the vote is of the seven members of the town council. And if it's, it's one-six, the person doesn't get appointed, or if it's three-four, the person doesn't get appointed. But if it's four-three, the person would get appointed. So the town council has final say on this, on any appointment to this board or any other board.
Yeah, because we don't have that language anywhere else.
Well, it's part of our charter, I think.
It's part of the charter. Yes. Town council is responsible for any, any committees of boards that is not quasi-judicial, that is elected boards, that you have the right to appoint.
I'm talking about the wording about the board may recommend.
No, that, this is specific to the RSA that talks into trustee of trust funds. And the quasi-judicial you do, we don't vote on those anymore, so you do appoint those as well.
But because we publicize the openings, the board could always recommend.
Yep.
I mean, there's nothing saying the board couldn't recommend.
Exactly.
Right.
So we change that in here, though? I'm not, I'm not following it completely. Are we adding into this suggestion further that the board may recommend to the council?
That's what the Attorney General requested.
So we'll, yeah, we're going to add that in tonight.
Yeah, so, so I need a motion
Alright.
to, to accept the language change, that further, the board may recommend to the town council, and the town council may appoint up to two alternate members for a one-year, for a one-year term.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Barbara, seconded by Nancy Murphy, to, to approve the, as Paul just stated, the addition to Article Nine, what will be Article Nine. Lon Woods?
Yeah, I haven't gotten over my angst about, and I know it's probably just me, but the trustees are elected by the voters of the town. And that's fine with me. If there's a vacancy, and we appoint, I don't understand the need for going beyond the length of the unfulfilled term.
I don't either, except it's in the RSA. The RSA states that when we appoint a replacement for somebody who's left or deceased, that, that we appoint, appoint them for the length of the remaining term.
I wouldn't be satisfied when I put my head on the pillow tonight if I didn't voice my angst about taking something away from the voters.
Okay. Which technically has nothing to do with this particular warrant, but I appreciate your comment. I mean, that's, that's a separate issue. But it's good.
He can sleep tonight now.
That's, that's even better. Any other comments or questions on the motion to adjust the wording on the proposed amendment to Charter Article six dash two A? Seeing none, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed?
Wood's votes present.
Or abstaining?
It doesn't change anything. Please record it as present.
That passes six zero with Lon Woods voting present. Six zero zero, I guess. So we'll adjust those, that wording as such. Did we open the public hearing on this?
Yes, we did, and we closed it.
And we closed it. Perfect. There's just too many opens and closes here. I'm going crazy. Oh, that's right, it's eight ten, we closed it.
That's, that's all I got for about, I don't know, a couple minutes.
Item number one on the public hearing?
Yeah, yeah. The next one is a petition bond, and the petitioners are here to give your presentation.
The next one is the fire truck?
Nope. The next one would be the petition bond. It's in, in, in the-
Number four on our agenda. You want to move it up to number two?
I didn't see that. Nope, that's fine, too. I forgot we, we did that. Nope, sorry.
If, if the petitioners are here, we could go ahead and, and go to number four.
Sorry, the petitioners are here. I, I just was looking at what the embedded one was.
Alright, so why don't we move to number four under the public hearings. Public hearing, a petition bond for drainage and road repairs to Woodland Drive area, submitted by Harvey and Elaine Bloom. Town council will be presented with the details of a petition bond received for drainage and road repairs to Woodland Drive area, which would include Shady Lane, Evergreen Drive, Glenwood Lane, Deerwood Drive, Birchwood Road, Pine Tree Lane, Fernwood Drive, Forest Drive, Hartwood Drive, and Timber Lane, and to authorize the issuance of not more than three million dollars.
Well, that was pretty much the presentation.
Mr. Chair, I, as I do every year when we, we talk about the warrant, I ran this, all the articles by, by our town attorneys. And while this is a petition bond, while our charter does say twenty-five signatures on the petition bond, the attorney is of the belief that this article is advisory in nature to the town council, as most petitions are. So I just wanted to get that out there, because we are, we are talking about it, so that it is advisory to the town council. And the town council takes it under advisement after the vote of, of the, of the people, of the residents. Right now, this is informational for you. This is automatically on the warrant. This will automatically be discussed at deliberative session. The only thing the town council can do is if there is, for instance, if they didn't list the right RSA, you could change the RSA, minor changes. You can't change what the intent of the warrant article is to be. So tonight, you couldn't vote to say, increase it to thirty million dollars, or decrease it to three dollars. That's changing the whole intent of the warrant article. I just wanted to give that information to the council and the public, that this will be discussed once again at deliberative session, and at that time, the residents, the public of Merrimack can talk about this bond article and make changes, if they see fit, or don't make any changes, and then it goes to ballot.
Am I also understanding correctly that at the deliberative session, it'll be the petitioners who present this?
Correct.
Okay.
Right. Okay, thank you. Mr. Bill?
I prepared a four-hour presentation.
Awesome.
Probably limit to about five minutes. In honor of the late hour. Okay, the background, basically, is that for multi-decades, four or five anyways, the streets in the area of the, streets that are named, are the tree streets, haven't been repaved. They've had some fixes and patchwork and stuff of that nature. And as a result, we've had holes and cracks throughout the area, and puddles and stuff like that have formed. The repairs have been temporary in nature. They happened when we had sewage put in and stuff of that nature, and the roads were patched and stuff of that nature, but not significantly. There's layers of repair. The drainage is poor, and people who are walking around the area, they come in from even outside the area, because it's mostly flat, and they can take walks through the area without going up and down hills, really getting a lot of exercise. And there are puddles around there. The example that I make, for example, is Lake Whitaker. Otis and family used to live in the area, and we affectionately called it Lake Whitaker. Now, Otis has moved out probably a couple of decades ago, but the lake is still with us. So after it rains, the, the water forms, and the road there doesn't go away. And that's consistent with some of the other areas that we have in the tree streets. So I have a bunch of photos, but these are representative. I, I call it Lake Whitaker. Evergreen at Pine Tree, you can see types of stuff like that, that form in the road itself. And there was holes and stuff like that in, in the roads that, this is just an example of. I have lots of other pictures if I didn't want to bore you with them, but just give you a couple of examples. This is the petition that we had mentioned, and the sum of three million dollars is what we, you know, figure for the purpose of that. And the petitions were signed, not by twenty-five, but we had over forty-something people in the area sign the petition. The names have been checked as bona fide residents of Merrimack and on the voter list. So there's three pages of the signatures. I won't go into every one, but they are bona fide. The three million dollar bond that we talk about shows how much, based on a two-point-five-five percent interest rate over twenty years, what, what the impact would be year to year. And this shows you a little bit better what the amounts are. So, in spirit of infrastructure from the federal government, and, you know, trying to go forward with improvements, I guess I'm representing this. And that's pretty much it. Any questions on why we're doing it, or about the area, or anything like that?
I understand what your desire is. Is three million dollars is going to improve the drainage as well as repave the roads?
That was the intent. That's the hope.
Okay. Any questions? Barbara?
So Paul, after the election, and if it's voted on, to be approved, and then the work is, we go out to bid. What we are finding is that everything is like twice as expensive as originally estimated. What happens in that case? Three million may not be enough, but I know we can't change the number. But what happens as far as getting the work done, when three million runs out?
When three million runs out, you do as much as you can for the three million. We've had drainage bonds for one million seven hundred, seven oh eight, one million seven hundred and eight thousand dollars that we had several projects that we were going to try to do with that, and we went down the list, and when the money was out, the money's out. And that's what it is, to prioritize the list of roads, and, and I would assume that if, if it does go to ballot, and it does pass, and the council does want to go ahead out and bond it, because this is advisory, you'd work with Kyle Fox and Department of Public Works, and set the priority list of, of roads up based on our, our numbers, our paving index, and drainage, and all that other stuff, and we just start working down the list that way.
Yeah, the, the concern, I didn't mention it, but it tends to be a safety concern as well, because as people are walking along the road, what I noticed that, instead of walking on the edges, if they see a puddle, they walk in the middle of the roads. And the way that we've seen drivers going through Merrimack, not even observing red lights and stuff like that, driving distractions, I'm really concerned about people getting run over. If they step around a puddle and there's a car coming. So I, I didn't put that in, but that's another issue.
It's clearly a concern. Do we have any, any track record of problems of that nature, or?
No deaths that I know.
Well, I mean, it doesn't have to be a death, but I mean-
Probably twisted ankles and stuff of that.
As people jump out of the way.
Yeah, luckily, luckily, we haven't had any, and people tend to yell at cars that are going too fast through the neighborhood. But that is pretty much it.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Nancy Murphy?
Thanks, Mr. Bill. I just wanted, where did that three million number come from? Who, how was that arrived at?
Well, we had discussed it with Paul and other people, and we thought that that was a reasonable fee for the area. Don't know exactly until you start getting into it, but we think it's appropriate. They, they had scheduled the streets to be done through the years, but after a while, they got displaced with other priorities. So I think our time is right, after, you know, four decades or so, to maybe consider it.
Thank you. Andy?
So Paul, in, in this year's budget, there was three hundred and seventy-five thousand budgeted for work in this area. If this bonded, if this petition warrant article had not come up, what, what is the long-range plan for the town to tackle the, the problems in this area? Is this a continual three seventy-five a year?
This was for four or five years worth of, four or five, six years worth of projects in that neighborhood. It's, there's several issues in this neighborhood with, with this, I found out. One is, where do we get the water and take the water, and what do we do with the water in the drainage? Merrimack doesn't have a closed drainage system, and that means that we do siphons, we do lands, we do rivers that this water goes to. We do have some work that was done years ago in this area for one section. We have to do volume studies to see if that pipe that was put in can handle this. The other way is to go out towards Jopper Road, but we don't have a lot of land to disperse the water, or siphon off the water for filtration and things of that sort. So we'd have to look at a lot of these things, and that's why the three seventy-five was put in for several years. We were trying to look at, what can we do with the low-hanging fruit to see what we needed to get done, and then see what other projects we had to do. If you remember, we did one when we did the Turkey Hill Roundabout, we did the Jopper Road. We did drainage in Jopper Road, up the road a little bit, and that, basically, we fixed the culvert, we moved the water off to the road, and then we put it into a wetland. Well, to take this water, or this drainage, and try to bring it into that, might not be cost-effective. So we'd have to look at those things, but our plan was to do three seventy-five for fi- four, five, six years, to try to get these streets done.
Thank you. Lon?
Yes, thank you. If I do some quick math with the town manager's figures, five years out, we're talking about maybe a million eight. You're asking for three million. That's just there. My question is, a project of the nature that the petition is asking for often runs into unforeseen snafus, or whatever you want to call them, along the way. If that happens, never mind the drainage issue, which is huge, in terms of what do you do with what you capture, who would be the arbiter, or whatever, of, you haven't done my street, you said you were going to do it, the money was appropriated for it, it's not done, who, who settles that problem? Just a question in my mind.
That, that would have to be on a priority list of what is, what is the, the biggest issues out there. We know what he just said was, they had Lake, Lake Whitaker there, that, that seemed to be a, a very big problem. We know of other areas, other issues in, in that area, where, where the drainage is and, and things of that sort, that there's problems, so we just have to come up with a list. If this passes, we'd come up with a list, Councilor Woods, and this is the list of streets, and these are the number one through X priorities, working with DPW, and we give it out to, to Mr. Bloom, and have him disseminate it through, through the group of people, saying, "This is the priority list, and we're going from top to bottom, and once the money's out, the money's out, and it might be drawn here, or here, or here." And things of that sort. We got to just be upfront and honest with people that, this is the list, like we were with the drainage bond. We had, I think, Wildcat Falls area was the last section that we did on that drainage bond, and we didn't get to do all of it, and we said, "This is the list, this is our priority list, this, 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 and this." And we got to Wildcat Falls, and we did that area for the drainage, and that was it. We were done with that drainage bonds, and everybody knew that was the list. And we did have people coming afterward saying, "Well, why was it supposed to be on that drainage bond?" Sorry, the priority list was here. We listed it in order. This is how much we had, this is how much it cost.
Now, one of the things that runs through my mind is, in the talk at the federal level on the infrastructure bills and stuff of that nature, I'm at the belief that New Hampshire has got a certain amount of funds that will come from the feds to fix infrastructure for bridges and roads, stuff of that nature. What I don't know is how much of allocations from- What I don't know is how much of allocations from the state goes to the town of Merrimack. And, and might that be an option? Because the, the notion is that people want to have the infrastructure fixed for the long term, and this might be an opportunity for Merrimack to approach New Hampshire and see if there are funds or bonds or things available, grants from that infrastructure bill.
We could always, we could always look into that. We got ARPA money, which we'll be talking about a little bit later tonight, in the town. The other one is that they are still working their way through in Congress.
I was going to say that.
On the Build Back America and, and stuff coming forward on, on what is in that infrastructure bill. What is in that infrastructure bill, and how we can spend that money and things of that sort. So, but it's an option that we can look at as well. And that's the language that's actually in the bond, is that you can go out for grants and other things.
Just to add a little bit to that, so the, the ARPA money, like Paul said, that was a different bill than the, the new infrastructure bill, the IIJA. The way that one works, from all the presentations I've been through, I've sat with one through with Senator Shaheen, Representative Pappas held one earlier this week. As is typical with funds that get directed from Federal Highway, FHWA, those funds are funneled through DOT into existing programs, and that's going to be the same for the bulk of the IIJA money. The good news is Merrimack is going to get a pretty good share of it. We already know on the US Three Bridge, we were, as you know, we were short-funded on that bridge by two million dollars, and the IIJA funds are going to kick in that, that extra amount to fully fund that project. In other areas where we may be able to take advantage, it'll, it'll certainly help with the State Aid Bridge Program. As you guys know, we have a closed pedestrian bridge. It may help us to get that one fixed quicker. It will also help with the existing safety programs, such as what's funding the HSIP, which is the Highway Safety Improvement Program. That's funding our wire road improvements, which is scheduled for 2027. So that may happen sooner. But all these kinds of projects are, are what gets funded. But DOT distributes the money on a program basis, not, not a check to the towns to spend as, as you would.
Well, thanks for clarifying that.
My pleasure.
Before Kyle sits down? Yeah, Kyle, just a second. Finley?
Sorry. I'd like, Kyle, I, I don't recall in our discussions on the budget what the plan was with the three seventy-five that's currently in this proposed budget, and I didn't know, if you spoke to it already, I apologize for missing it, but if you, if you have an idea of what that plan was, because I, I know the neighborhood well, and it is a flatland, and so getting rid of the water, as was suggested earlier, is something that would be contemplated early on. And any projects that happen, if it in fact is through this bonding idea or other, you would, because it has to be prioritized, you'd have to start with your outfall first and build back. Otherwise, you have a project in the middle and nowhere for it to go. So, I, I, could you remind me what the three seventy-five was going to be?
Sure. I'll, I'll give a little history first of the area. So back in 2008, I think is when we had the drainage bond, and as Paul mentioned, we did a number of projects. Sauvegan Courier area, Joelynn area, and we did do some work in this area. And it's what we now call Woodland Drive Phase One, because we, we are trying to tackle these other areas. And what that project did is it rebuilt Woodland Drive a little past Harwood Drive, and it went down Harwood Drive to, I forget the, the road that goes up. Mr. Bloom could probably help me.
Maybe not.
I, I, I forget the name of that road. But the improvements were mostly Woodland Drive and, and Harwood Drive, and the intersections with all of those streets in between. We have drainage at each of those intersections, and that was a huge success. It is a difficult area. There's underground utilities, it's flat, we've got driveways to meet, and, and it was a really challenging project. So our plan going forward was to take off what we could, to do it in little bits, because we figured it was a way to at least get started. Mr. Bloom is right, these roads are, are in really tough shape. They're some of our worst roads PCI-wise in our list. Forest Drive has long been the worst road on our list, and we've not done anything with it, because we know it'd be foolish to spend money without doing the drainage first. So i- it's a challenge we recognize. The CIP we built out to try and accomplish something, and we put in a number that we thought was palatable for the budget, and that's that three seventy-five number. We don't believe the six years of the three seventy-five in the budget will finish the job. We think it's probably going to be significantly more, to do it right and to get everything done, significantly more than the three million that the petition warrant article has, has recommended. But it would certainly be a good start to, to address certainly what is a known need.
But I think it's important to understand, you don't want to do the paving repairs until you have the drainage problem taken care of, or you'll just be coming back the next year to re...
Oh, absolutely.
Fix that.
That's right. Exactly right.
Okay.
And so I guess I didn't really answer your question, Finley. So, to get to your specific question, what, what are we doing first? As Paul noted, we don't know where to put the water. The water from Phase One goes across Babusick Lake Road, through an easement between two properties, to infiltration basins that we installed as part of the bond project. And what doesn't infiltrate there, there's a long pipe that actually goes right to the Sauvegan River. So, Don is going to first perform an analysis on what capacity we have remaining in that twenty-four-inch pipe. Hopefully, we have significant capacity, but we're not sure yet. If there's capacity in that pipe, we may be able to just add additional stormwater chambers in that existing easement and, and be able to accomplish some pretty good work. If not, then we'll have to try and figure out another option, and, and that's where cost is truly unknown, because the town doesn't own any property in the area where we could build a detention bond or otherwise outlet it with treatment. As part of our MS Four permit, we can't create new outfalls without being approved and treating the stormwater. So that's the real challenge for the project, and, and the real challenge for creating an estimate for the project without getting into design and, and trying to figure these details out.
See, for, for me, that's really, I think, very important, and so, I mean, it's, I'd like input from Paul and you, it's, it's sooner than later, before, you know, I don't know if we put a recommendation on this or what have you.
No, no recommendation.
Okay.
Until after the deliberative.
That's right, okay, so, but, that's what I'm saying, before that time.
And then it's only if we want.
If we want, right, and, no, absolutely, that's with any of them, actually, we can...
Yeah, you don't have to.
No, if we want to put a recommendation.
We have a recommendation on money.
Right, no, I, I see what you said, yeah, yeah. So...
But since this is petition, you don't have to put a recommendation.
Okay, no, very good. But I, for me, for a cover level, because if I'm going to, if I'm going to believe in a project, I'm willing to advocate for it and so on, but I really have to have a better understanding, because it's, I get it, it's so flat that you, you, in the middle of it, you'd start a high, but you're going to have to go low in order to get it out there, and I don't know where you put it besides the river, the way we've already done the Woodland Drive component. And, and on the sizing, I'm hoping that we in fact took those kind of things into account, because they have to redo something. If that's your only outfall, or major outfall, then I'd be ashamed that we didn't get it right in the first, the first time around. And then my last wonder is, did we get, oh, never mind, you answered it. So, I'm not even going to ask the question, because it would be silly of me. So, thank you, Kyle.
You're welcome.
Is it my understanding that there'd probably be a substantial amount of money researching and trying to figure out what to do with the drainage first?
It, it can be. We're going to try and do most of that in-house.
Yes, okay.
Don has the capability to do.
Okay.
The drainage analysis, so, from a, from a catchment standpoint.
Understood.
She knows the area we're catching.
Okay.
And she can size the pipes and, and see.
Perfect.
What's existing and, and see what...
Great.
See what ability there is for the existing system to take more.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Any other questions? Or comments? Thank you, Mr. Bloom.
Thank you very much for your consideration.
And you'll be at the deliberative session on March ninth?
Why would you miss it?
Me neither. Thank you. So, so what, that was number four. I want to take the number three, the, the ladder fire truck up next, if we can, before the wastewater treatment facility. So we'll go to number three, submitted by the Town Council Chair Tom Kanigan and Vice Chair Finley Rothaus. The Town Council will hold a public hearing to receive public input on a proposed issuance of debt. Did we actually hold the public hearing? Did we do the public hearing on that?
On this?
Did we open and close the public hearing on the...
On the, on the petition?
The petition one?
I don't think you did. I think you just asked questions together.
Yeah, so she should do it right now.
So, before we move on, for, for the record, we'll open the public hearing at eight forty-three for the petition bond.
My pleasure.
For drainage and motor repairs on Woodland Drive area.
My friend.
Is, is that the flatland up by Woodland Drive? No. And we'll go ahead and close the public hearing at eight forty-three, seeing nobody coming to talk to us. So, now we'll move on to number three, the public hearing on the ladder fire truck. Hold a public hearing to receive public input on the proposed issuance of debt of one point five million for a new fire ladder truck and expenses related to the issuance of municipal bonds. Paul, you're going to kick this one off, I presume?
Actually, I'm going to ask the chief to come sit with me.
Oh, okay. Chief, welcome.
So, we have two presentations. We have the presentation the chief did prior that moved this to the, the warrant, or I have a summarized version of, of that presentation for, for this public hearing. So, which one would you like?
I, I think we do the summarized one.
That's fine with me.
The previous one is already in the record. In the can, if you will, it's on tape. If people want to see it, they, they can do so.
I wanted to give you the option.
I, we appreciate that.
So...
Always like options.
So, as, you can take it away if you want, or you want me to do it? It doesn't matter. All right, all right, all right, all right, fine. There you go. So, the town has always had a ladder truck since nineteen seventy-two. For, from seventy-two to eighty, we had a used ladder truck off there, top, top left. From eighty to two thousand and two, we actually bought a, a ladder truck, and it was a, it basically just that, a ladder. And then from two thousand and two to the current, we have a ladder truck, but we have a ladder truck with a platform. Come on.
So roughly twenty years.
So, twenty, usually we get about twenty years per truck. Why do we continue with the operations of our own ladder truck? Provides for firefighter safety during roof operations, safer for victim removal from the exterior of buildings, ability for large volumes of water if needed, and carries a full complement of ground ladders, to include a thirty-five-foot ladder in case we need that as well. Allows for outside access to commercial rooftop units, ability to protect exposures, used to assist in certain rescue operations, such as trench rescues, anchor point, and repelling anchor point with a bucket. That's why the chief's here, to answer.
I was going to say.
Those questions.
I have no idea what you're talking about, or I don't know if you do either.
When we spoke the last time, Council Healy did, you know, remind me that, you know, the new apartment building that's over by the mall, while it's really three or four stories, it's actually five, because you have the garage underneath. So our typical ground ladder on an engine is only twenty-four feet. So that's why we, you know, need some type of other truck, AKA ladder truck, to carry those extra ground ladders that give us the extra reach, should we need to do that.
Even thirty-five feet will only get you up to what, third floor?
Yeah, roughly a third floor.
Okay.
Yeah.
And that's a five-four, so it's...
So, but with the area that gets us...
And other apartment buildings are similar that have been built recently.
Right.
And we've had already.
Okay.
And then most commercial buildings and Leeds-type buildings have HVAC units on the rooftop, and it just gets the guys to the roof that much quicker. If we have a ladder truck, then trying to pull out a ladder, put it up against a building and have to climb it. If we have a ladder truck, we can bring it up, put it there, and, and do what we need to do. The cost of our current ladder truck, from January seventeenth to November of two thousand and twenty-one, was seventy-five thousand dollars in repairs, about a fifteen-thousand-dollar annual cost for repairs over that period. We had the truck evaluated by our Equipment Maintenance Division, and they found rust on the fuel tank and straps, rust on the undercarriage, body corrosion, corroded rear airbag mounts, hydraulic clothes and cylinders are getting old, engine has blow-by, meaning that it's leaking oil, brakes, basically normal wear and tear, but, and tires, normal wear and tear, but if we're going to go and trade it in or, or get a ladder truck in the next so many months, it doesn't make sense to do those kind of repairs. But just to know that those are additional repairs that are coming up, and, and those, those aren't your regular two-hundred-dollar tires. They're expensive tires, so...
Two-hundred.
Yeah, so they're, they're, they're much more than that.
Much more.
We purchased the, the truck in two thousand and two, like I said, it cost the town seven hundred and forty-six thousand, seven hundred and forty-eight dollars. The chief used his magical calculator to do current costing, future value of a dollar, current value, present value of a dollar, and today's value, that truck would have cost us one million, one hundred fifty-three thousand, seven hundred and thirty-six dollars.
And fourteen cents?
And twenty-two cents.
Oh, twenty-two cents.
The new truck, which is a picture of potentially what we're going to be looking at purchasing, is one million, four hundred seventy-three thousand, nine hundred ninety-four dollars. There's some cash discounts if, if we buy the truck or pay for the truck upfront, but then there's some other items that we need to outfit the truck. So we're asking for one million, five hundred thousand dollars for the ladder truck. We did a ten-year bond at two percent interest rates, and it comes out to being roughly a hundred and fifteen thousand in first year, because of the way we're going to set up the bond payments. And then the next year, it's a hundred and seventy-eight thousand, and then a hundred and seventy-five, and it, it goes down every year. Total cost of the one point five million dollars over that ten-year period would be a hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars in interest, total cost would be one million, six hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars. Roughly, there's a four cent, four cent, and then it drops down to three cents. The one thing is, is that when this bond, if we do go out to bond, we have a bond that's dropping off. That's basically the same payment of a hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars, a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars a year, so this bond would take its place. So in all reality, you would not see that increase of four cents in your tax rate. It would just be, we'll be supplanting the bond that's ending, with this new bond running out ten additional years. There was some discussions towards the end about AP ARPA money funding uses, and the Treasury came out with some definitions, and recipients can use the, this funds on the government services up to revenue loss amounts, whether that's standard allowance amount or the amount calculated using the above approach. And the above approach is a, a very convoluted calculation. It's, it's plus this, minus that, and then the Treasury said, we got to make this easier. So, if you have ten million dollars or less, you don't have to worry about doing revenue calculations. If you have ten million dollars or more, you have to worry about doing the calculations. We have two million, seven hundred thousand dollars, so we don't have to worry about doing the calculations. So, in reality, government services generally include any services of traditional providing government, government, unless Treasury has stated otherwise. Here are some common examples. Some common examples of construction of schools and hospitals or buildings for municipal use, roads, road building or maintenance of those roads and other infrastructure, health services, general government administration staff, administrative facilities, environmental remediation, and this is the one we're looking at, is provision of fire, police, and other public safety services, including purchase of fire trucks and police vehicles.
Doesn't get any clearer.
It's, it's like, when we saw this and this came out, and, and, and like I said, a lot of this stuff is coming out in not even the eleventh hour, but the eleventh hour and fifty-nine minutes, when we're doing the budget. but the eleventh hour and fifty-nine minutes, when we're doing the budget. So, you know, this was hot off the press when we did the, the presentation of the bond. We did some more research and that, that's how clear it is. The one thing they said is that no debt service or replenishment financial services. Meaning that we cannot use this two point seven million dollars and just give it for property tax relief. You can't just take the two-seven and say, here you go, have fun, here's property tax release. Oh, and by the way, you can't take this two point seven million dollars and say, I'm gonna pay off my bond that I got approved three years ago. Can't do that either. But you can use it to purchase items such as, as fire trucks and things that sort going forward. Um, I do want to give you some pros and cons of, of why, why we're gonna use this. Uh, one of the pros is no bond debt because we pay a hundred percent cash. Uh, it's permitted use, like I just explained. We can get the delivery of the ladder truck sooner than waiting to April for the vote to see if it passes and then purchasing it. Um, one of the companies that we have used in the past has a ladder truck, and the chief can talk more about this, but has a ladder truck coming off the line. And I think if, if we, if this, you go whichever way you go, I think we can get an agreement with them to say that if it passes, we, we want this truck coming off the line if the bond passes. Or if you say tonight to me, Paul, nope, we're gonna use this money and we're gonna buy it for cash. We can, we can have an agreement with them saying when it comes off, we want that truck. Um, and then the taxpayers will not see it, see a tax increase in issuing a bond. I, as I said, they probably wanted to see a tax increase issuing the bond because this will supplant a bond that's coming off. But, it's just, then there'll be a tax savings because now we won't have to raise that hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars for that debt services. Some of the cons is, um, we're, one of the things we were looking at, we, we talked about the sewer, sewer projects that we had over at wastewater of about two point three, two point four million dollars for, for the, to have some of that, out of the two-seven to have that funding. Um, if the sewer project is pushed, if that, if that's, those money does not go towards a sewer project, it would increase the cost to finish the sewer projects of about additional three point four million dollars in cost. Because we'd have to bond that two, two point seven million dollars. Um, and that comes out to an extra three point four million dollars in cost to the sewer users. Um, if, if we use the remainder of ARPA money that is left over from the one-five to the two-seven, it reduces the cost to a million, one point seven million dollars in cost to the sewer fund. And some of those sewer projects that, that they're looking at, that's why Sarita's staying in the back. She can explain what project she was thinking about using for that ARPA money. Um, it's decision. I would love to say I got a crystal ball and here you go, th- this is, this is a decision one way or the other. Um, you know, it's needed. The ladder truck is needed. The sewer infrastructure improvements down that are gonna, for the remaining portion that we were gonna use some of this ARPA money for, is needed as well. Um, you know, it's, it's the, it's the, it's the salt shed, not the salt shed, but the sawdust shed. Which, by having the sawdust out in the elements, increases the amount of dry time, which increases the use of natural gas. Which increases the heating, which increases the cycle on, on our compost end. Um, one of the other things I, I believe is at the end process, um, some of, some of that information that we'll need to have to do. Now, we do kinda have a healthy fu- uh, sewer infrastructure balance that we've been keeping. But if we use some of this money to, in, in conjunction with some of the capital reserves that we talked about originally, maybe some of those other projects might, the later projects would might have to get pushed off a year or two until we can build up the fund and the infrastructure capital reserve fund again. So, um, there's a lot of pluses and minuses. Um, one, one discussion that I was in, I'll be honest with you. Uh, one of the discussions I've been in, I've been in a couple with the councillors, but one I was in with the, with a private citizen as well, is that they said, if we use ARPA money for the fire truck, everybody sees a benefit. Is if we use ARPA money for the sewer fund, only the users see that benefit. Now, that was his argument and that he gave. And, yes, technically you're true. That, that is true. That, yes, only the sewer fu- users are gonna see a benefit, um, in that fund. But those users also pay a tax to use, to have their, you know, go to their washing machine and their sink and their, their toilet and be able to flush and not have to worry about, is my leach feel good, i- is my, is, is, uh, is my, uh, do I have to get my septic system pumped and things of that sort? So, yes, there is a convenience factor involved, but they do pay a tax as well, those users to the system. And, um, so, i- it, it's, I keep flipping. Like a flounder, you know?
Like a fish.
Like a fish on this. But, is it a good use of the money? I'll say, yes, it is. Can we use the money? Is it permitted use? Yes, it is. Do we need the ladder truck? Yes, we do. Do we need these upgrades to the sewer system? Yes, we do.
We can keep going. Do we need radios for the eight hundred megahertz system?
Correct. All the way down, all the way down the road. We, we can just keep going back and forth on this, you know, with it. And that's why I had the chief here to answer all the tough questions of why we need the truck.
Anyway, I, I understand. These apartments made me realize we need the truck. That's, that's the reason that I'm supportive of the truck. I'm wondering if, if there's any idea of, of a rate impact by funding these other projects for the sewer plant. Um, I know we're doing a study soon. I, if, if anybody had kind of a general idea how much that impact might be.
It, it's gonna affect the, we had a twelve percent, I believe, this year. Um, right? And I believe, Sarita, correct me if I'm wrong, do we have another twelve and then a five?
Uh, no, we have a twelve next year.
Twelve next year, yep.
Then we wait a year and we have five.
And then we have a five. That five percent might be more than five percent. And I don't know what that number would be at this time. But there would be an increase to that five percent.
Sure.
Because of the extra one point seven million dollars that the fund's gonna have to, or the three point four that the fund would have to.
Cover.
Cover. Okay?
Alright.
Andy?
A couple of questions. I think everybody knows I'm in, I'm in favor of using these funds, uh, for the fire truck. You know, I, I brought it up last meeting when we talked about this. You're a hundred percent right. I- if we use these funds for the wastewater treatment facility, the folks that are currently on sewer are the ones that benefit and not the entire town. But if we use this for the fire truck, the entire town benefits. Not only because we're not going out on bond, but we have a bond that's getting ready to be paid off. And what's the current impact on the tax rate for that bond that's about to drop off?
Around three cents.
So, right there's three cent savings, even though we're bumping up the tax rate, right there's another three cents that's getting ready to come off the tax rate.
And that would be in twenty-three, twenty-four.
Yeah. So, I, I'm in favor of that. Is there, you mentioned a cash discount as well. Can we quantify what that cash discount?
I don't know off the top of my head, but if you do pay cash for the truck, there is a percentage discount that you get for paying cash upfront for the truck. There would be provisions in place that should the dealership or the manufacturer go out of business or something happen. The town would still have a reserve bond somewhere that would cover the costs that we would pay for the truck upfront. So while you pay for the truck upfront, you're really not losing any money. Because there'd be bonds in place to make sure if something detrimental were to happen.
I just wondered, paying cash, you know, if we went and executed this and we, we got this truck coming off the line, and we didn't go the lease option, will it be less than the one point five million? Are, are we saving anything by?
Actually.
And I know that's whether we do a bond or use this funds.
I, I think either way, we'd have a cash option. Because we, we could work a deal either way with them.
Okay.
Um, because we, 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 if it does pass in April, we'd go to the manufacturer and say, okay, here we go. Here it is, here's your check. Give me, give me the paperwork I need to do it. And then we reimburse ourselves from our fund balance that we have. And that's why we need a fund balance of, of four, five, six million dollars for things like this that come up that we're able to write the check and then reimburse ourselves for it in, in the bond. So we would get the cash discount there. The reason, um, we're looking at one point five is even with the cash discount, there is stuff that we need to put on there, like our extrication tools and, uh, some other stuff like the rigging for repelling and things of that sort that is old that we'd have to replace.
Yeah, and unfortunately, some of the news that I got about these trucks that are coming off the line, because they are demo trucks, they have extra features and systems on them that we really didn't want if we were to build a truck. So the cost of these trucks that we're, might be looking at would be very close to the one point five.
Okay.
So, we would get a discount, and I just found my paperwork. We would get a discount of almost forty-one thousand dollars off the cost of the price tag of the truck, if we would pay cash upfront.
And then the last question, if, if we use this and then obviously we would have to do something different for the, the wastewater treatment plant, even with that potential impact, the twelve percent and then the eventual five percent that may be more, am I under the, the correct understanding that we are, still have some of the lowest impact sewer, sewer impact fees in the area? Is that a correct assumption?
I will ask Sarita or Kyle to come up and, and answer that question. They are the experts in, in this realm.
Okay.
But yeah, we are pretty close to one of the lowest, yes.
One of the lowest currently.
Currently.
Yeah, we'd still be in the lower third.
Okay.
Um, and now Kyle, do you wanna kinda explain what might, or Sarita, what might not get done if, if we use this, a portion of, of, of this money, a one point five million dollars versus a two-seven? What would not be getting done in this current?
Yeah, alas, Sarita, to speak specifically to that, but before I relinquish the mic since you gave it to me. I, I just wanted to, you know, obviously my, my opinion is biased by my position, um, as public works director. Um, I, I think we need to spend the money at the wastewater plant. You're, you're perfectly right, Andy, about the, the sewer rate. Yeah, we can just raise it three years from now. But the parts of the plant that we're talking about are fifty-two years old that need work. And the reason we're in this mess that we've been in, phase one, phase two, phase three, phase four, now phase five, is because wastewater projects, they're so easy to defer. The guys will just fix it. We're, we're at a critical state of our infrastructure. And we were sort of planning and counting on the, the two point three that the council had approved previously to, to get these needs, um, of some very specific components that Sarita will speak to um, in much better detail than I ever could. Uh, but we're really fearful if we don't get that done now. Not waiting for the twelve percent and then the, whatever the five percent becomes. We don't think we have the time. So I'll let Sarita speak specifically to the projects.
So one component of the project is the sawdust building that Paul had talked about or, or the town manager had spoken about. The other portion of the project that I didn't mention is in our chlorine building, we have a, an electrical upgrade and we have something called return activated sludge pumps. There are four return activated sludge pumps. These are really big pumps that takes the water, if you remember when I showed you the picture, it takes the, um, the water with the microbes and it recycles it back to the aeration basin. Now, this is how the bugs can live and this is how we can sustain. These pumps, I mean, they're full of rust. We don't know if they're gonna survive. The header pipe is full of rust. We don't know if that's gonna survive. We lose these pumps, we lose the entire plant. And if you have to then, eh, there isn't any fixing it because there are no spare parts for fifty-year-old, fifty-two-year-old pumps. Uh, we go on eBay. I think the first time I came to everybody, I said, we go and we search eBay for parts. Uh, sometimes we will go out and we'll ask people to make parts. So something that, uh, in the past would not have been expect, eh, expensive. Every year gets more expensive. Um, the other piece of it is if we lose our capability to return that activated sludge to those aeration bas- basins. And those are the basins that clean your water. Those are the basins that eat the organics, that make that water clean. If we lose that, it's not as simple as going down to Home Depot and purchasing them. There is a six-months lead time for these pumps. As well as if the, you lose this infrastructure, you, we will have to bring on a skid, a whole system to handle it. So now you're looking at a project that may now cost one point three or one point five million dollars. That is gonna be upwards of three or four million dollars because you have to keep the system running. Because we, by permit, don't have the ability to just stop treating our wastewater. So.
Okay. Thanks.
So I do just want to add, thank you for the opportunity to speak. And I, I know it's a tough decision and I don't envy your decision. It, it is a challenge trying to balance everything that, that you guys do, so. Thank you.
Thank you, Kyle. Lon?
That was a rather succinct, um, portrayal. Thank you. My question gets back to just specifically the truck. And I agree with the, I agree with the purchase.
Now.
I, because when you look at a graphic about maintenance and that cost over either a quarter or a year or two years, we're not really saving anything. So. That's all I had.
Okay. Barbara?
So, I've been trying to look at this from a triage point of view. And the way I see this is if we think the fire, the, you know, ladder one is poor, I don't wanna jinx this, I'm not gonna say. But if there was an emergency and she was down, it would be possible to call in backup. It would take a little longer, but the, you know, we'd get another ladder truck in. If we lose the wastewater treatment plant, that means the EPA comes and sets up shop in Merrimack. Am I right? And that means they start monitoring and supervising everything going on for wastewater until we're up and functional again. Am I right? I'd rather prevent having EPA sitting on our doorstep for any length of time. But I like the idea of being able to get a fire truck off the line, that you don't have to sit and order because we knew when we ordered the two engines last year, it took a year and then a little bit. So, something to consider.
And we flip and flop. Finley?
Yep. And which is why I need to have a better understanding. We, we could bond the sewer project. It would affect the rates more immediately, I guess. So that's why I kinda have to know what kind of impact that would be.
The three million, depending on what you want.
On the rate. I know, I wanna know what percent the rate would increase.
I thought we had decided the rate probably wouldn't increase, at least not right away, but.
Not with the ten million or the eight million, eight million, one hundred and two thousand we were talking about. But by putting another seven, one point seven to two, to three point four million dollars, it, it would drop. The out-years, we might have to increase from five to seven or even ten percent in that three-year period.
So it wouldn't be an immediate increase. We would not have to raise rates immediately.
We wouldn't have to raise the rate from twelve, on the twelve percent that we're looking, but that five percent.
Which is two years.
Which is two, three years, because next year, three years.
Right.
Would have to go up. Because if we do bond this and it does pass, remember, this is the third bond we've looked for, for wastewater in four years. So if, if they do agree and say, yes, it's needed and we do bond it, we're, we're, we're looking at it one year after substantial completion, which could be in that
Three.
Three-year range. And then we'd have to raise the rate to, to smooth out the, the, the fund, so to speak, in the out-years with, with increasing it. Remember, we have twenty, a twenty-six million dollar, twenty-two point six million dollar, two bonds that are gonna be coming on, um, towards the end of the year. The other thing, the other, like I said, I've been flip-flopping all over because the other thing is, is that, yes, we have a contractor there now. He's gonna give us a better rate because he doesn't have to mobilize. He knows what, what he's getting into. He's gonna give us a better rate now on, on doing these two projects than if we have to wait a year, a year or two. Eh, eh, like I said, I've been flip-flopping for three days now on, on, on this, you know? Yes, it makes sense. We, we can do this. The taxpayers aren't gonna see a tax rate increase if we bond. Right? But we can get the truck that much sooner. We, instead of April, you know, we can get it maybe by, I don't even know when it's coming offline, do you know when it's coming offline, chief?
I don't, and again, these trucks are coming on and off so quickly, because people are snatching up as soon as they're available, so it's it's first come, first served.
Right, so if if we get in line now and say, yes, we're gonna do this, we might get a truck four months sooner than if we wait till April, which is three, I know it only is two months away, two and a half months away. But it might be a six month on the back end, because somebody might already taken this one demo truck that they're building for for ladder. So i- it's not, it's not a, it's not an easy decision, and I'm sorry that I can't bring a cut and dry answer to the council, because they're both necessary needs to to both, to both the wastewater treatment plant and for the fire truck. So.
I have, just before I go to Andy, the, we're doing a public hearing, right?
Yes.
Tonight?
Yes.
On this topic?
Yes.
For the bond?
Correct.
Should we open the public hearing and have that, and then discuss this, or
We can.
we need to get this squared away?
No, I guess we 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 can open the public hearing and see if anybody in the audience is here to talk about it, or runs down for it.
Don't wanna forget it.
Yep, so we we can get that out of the way, and then continue this discussion, but these are all, you know.
I I get it that they're they're important discussions, but I, we might end up going completely away from what the public hearing is about, which is the bond.
Right, so we should get that out of the way.
Why don't we at least see if there's anybody from the public that wants to talk to this concept of bonding a fire truck? So we'll open the meeting at nine fourteen, the public hearing, and look for anybody that in the public that wants to comment on the bond proposal for a ladder fire truck, fire ladder, whatever it is.
Ladder.
A truck with a big ladder on it. And seeing nobody rushing, we'll say that at nine fifteen, we're gonna close the public hearing, and I'm gonna say that I've accomplished that part of it. And Andy had his hand up.
Just a question, and and maybe this is not a possibility, but one of the other public hearings that we have is is the ten point one million dollar bond for for the now, in the calculation that you've given us, you've got ten point one million for that bond, but a two million dollar grant on that. So so the we would only go out and borrow eight point one. Is it possible that we still go out and borrow the ten point one even after that grant, and complete the the items at the wastewater treatment facility, and then use these other funds to buy the fire truck?
Ye- yes, and that's why you got the additional cost of one, seven, and three, four up there. Yes. It is possible.
That's partly why we switch the order of these two, so that we can decide what we're gonna do with the truck before we go talk about what we're gonna do about the sewer plant.
That's exactly what I was thinking, Andy. Cause you really, I my question was, can we accomplish both? What would we need to do in order to accomplish both? Because I think there's equal need. And so we're talking about, okay, at what cost? And I think that's
At what cost and who pays?
And who pays, and all of those variables that need to be considered to be able to make a decision. And that, yeah, there's pros and cons to even that decision.
Sure.
But I really do think it takes both, all the variables into consideration, identifying, acknowledging that they're equally important in their own ways. And so it, and I think it takes advantage of being able to do the cash and move it, but also acknowledging the needs that the wastewater needs. And we do have that two million that will help out, just keep it at ten, and use the two million to add on top of it, which would come out to be twelve, which would address the needs, I believe, or at least it sounds like. So to me, I think that's a very reasonable answer. Is it an easy one? No, it isn't. But I think it addresses addresses the critical needs of both.
Lon, you had your hand up? Lon? You had your hand up, did you have another comment to make?
The previous comments superseded my concerns.
Okay. So I, so I'm gonna throw in my two cents. I agree a hundred percent with what Andy said at the beginning, that that uh the the way we use this funding, I think, should be made in an effort to try and and maximize the benefit for as many people in Merrimack as possible. And to amplify what's come up recently, I think we still need to do the sewer project, and if we have to increase that bond somewhat to do that, then we do it. Um, we're talking about raising fees out three years from now. When the when the presentation was made on how the rates were gonna go, and where we stood with respect to other people, we were still in the bottom third, and the other people hadn't come up with any rates increases. Um, because we didn't know what those rate increases might be. So there's no reason that I don't, I I can't come up with a reason why other plants that are having to rebuild and everything, because they're all fifty years old in New Hampshire, they were all built out of federal funding back in the seventies. Those those folks in the other towns are gonna have to be raising their rates as well. So I I still think we're well in the bottom third, uh no matter what happens at this point. And so I'm I'm all for going forward with the truck with a cash payment, getting it taken care of and out of the way, benefiting the most people possible. And and then the folks, we've always been saying that the that the sewer system is a user fee-based system. It's not a tax-based system. And the folks that are getting the benefit of the sewer are paying for the sewer. And I think that's the way it ought to continue to go, we should bond the remaining amount of work that we have to do on that sewer system. So I was just trying to throw out my two cents, I've been waiting to hear other people's comments before I did that. So, does anybody else have any thoughts they wanna share?
I I I agree with that, I I I actually think the sewer project is a little more important, but I think the utilization of those funds to cover the whole town is a point that is very serious. I think the project has to happen immediately, the wastewater. I don't like how I felt like I'd been gouged over the past few years with these things, with the with the contractors, you know, checking it up thirty and forty percent. Then that's, that's almost offensive to me, so I'm hoping that the guy currently on the project will in fact take all those, you know, pieces into account when when proposing that.
That's our, that's our hope.
So I think I think we should bond entirely the wastewater project and use the funds for the
So we do everything.
Yep.
Alright, so.
So you need a motion?
Yes, if if the council is looking to use the ARPA money for for the ladder truck, what I would need is that um that, and and we can't do it tonight. We'd still have to come back and do another meeting on in the February twenty-fourth, or or March tenth um to to officially move the ARPA money to buy the ladder truck. Um, if that's what I'm hearing from the council, there is no need for a motion to move the ladder truck bond to the warrant.
Correct.
I would just need some kinda Paul, bring it back in the next couple of meetings, so we can do what we need to do to use the ARPA money.
Okay, we have to do that because of public notification, is that why?
Yes, because it's, yes, because we're using
We didn't agenda the item.
We have to, yeah, we didn't, we didn't agenda that to do it. Um, we'd have to agenda it, gender it, and we would have to kinda reverse an earlier vote that the council took, because right now, that two point four million dollars is still sitting with wastewater for them to use.
So you need an understanding from us.
I need, yeah, basically, I won't say order, but I'll say order, to bring it forward.
We're ordering you another request.
That that will work too, to bring it forward. To bring it forward as ARPA, the ladder truck is ARPA money. And the other reason why I'm saying that is that, so that the public understands, and the chief understands, so he can go back to his guys when they say, hey, wait a second, the ladder truck isn't on the warrant, and you promised me the ladder truck on the warrant. He can say, we're getting it with cash earlier. So that's why
And we will have made that decision before then anyway.
Right, right now, I would need that to bring it forward, that that's what you, your intentions are.
I just have one question. If we have the open hearing for ARPA funds, and I'm and I'm fine with that, I have no issue, but if the public overwhelmingly says they don't want to use the ARPA funds for the ladder truck, what options does that leave?
That's not a public hearing, is it? That you're talking about? I mean, I, the public's welcome to say whatever they want.
They can say what they want on that.
They can certainly offer their opinions, but
Right.
we don't have to have a public appear, a public hearing to decide how to
To do a grant?
To use the ARPA funds.
I think we already accepted the ARPA funds.
Yes, we did.
The full two point seven. It would be be allocate, read, unallocating the two point four to wastewater
Changing the allocation.
And allocating the the one point five to to use for this truck.
That's a town council decision.
Probably old business kind of meeting, part part of the meeting, I believe.
Okay, now, since, now my, we we have to vote on the bond for the wastewater treatment, though.
We would have to vote on it, and actually
And that would be unchanged.
That that could be unchanged and just added the dollar amount.
Well, if we're going for ten million
Yeah.
We leave it at two million.
You would increase it to twelve, because we're guaranteed the two million dollar
Oh, I see what you're saying.
State funding. Oh, oh.
Sarita.
Hi, so it doesn't work that way. Um, we were approved for ten point one million dollars. Uh, I submitted the paperwork back, you know, like a year ago, and then I resubmitted paperwork again. The state has a list, and they generate this list of all the money that they have, and all the money they're gonna give to all the different communities. So they on their list are counting on giving us eight point one million dollars. We would have to go back to the state, we would have to see if they would be willing to entertain another two million dollars on it. Um, the other thing I wanna point out is that when you push out some of the work I was talking about, it doesn't end up being three point four million dollars, because when you push out a schedule, there are monthly fees associated with maintaining the construction crew at your site. So that three point four can actually turn into five point six, because they have to push out the end date of that project as well. But we can go to the state tomorrow and see what they say, it's just there's not a guarantee that they'll say they have the money, because as Chairman Koenig pointed out, the whole state is going through this. Um, Portsmouth just spent a hundred million dollars upgrading their facility. Um, Exeter spent about fifty million dollars upgrading their facility. So the whole state is going through this at this point in time.
So are you, Sarita, before you get away, you're saying that the eight million is the amount they're willing to to bond for us?
That's what they have approved for us. They, in their spreadsheet table that they've sent us, um, they get, they're giving us eight million dollars, or eight point one million dollars, and they're giving us a two million dollar grant. So the the option to increase it, it's not as simple as making the phone call and say, oh, well, now I want ten million, because they've allocated the amount of money that they have, they've allocated to many communities as well. Um, it doesn't mean we can't talk to them, it doesn't mean we can't go back, it just, it's not that simple.
And and maybe not simple using SRF money, but the way that I've put this on the agenda, and the way that I've listed this as a public hearing, there's a possibility that there might be, you know, two million dollars of
Two different bonds.
Two different bonds.
So keep what has already been arranged.
Right.
But put in a separate two million dollar.
And now that option's available to us the way it's currently presented?
I am not a lawyer, um, and I didn't sleep at a Holiday Inn last night, but uh tho- those are kind of legal questions that that would do it. However, because of the way that I did do it, and I knowing how we're gonna look into this, is that I listed it as a separate public hearing notice, so that if we wanted to go outside of SRF and bond it on ourselves, we could do it, just know that we're not gonna get the two, the full we'd have to bond the full amount. I don't know if we can bond two million here and ten million there, I don't see why not, because communities do that all the time. They don't go and take their full bond out at once, they do it over a number of years as well. So.
Timing, I guess, is, you know, is is there timing that will be able to make these calls happen and get the information that's necessary? With the appropriate amount of time left?
Well, one thing you can do, there there is timing, because we can make the calls tomorrow and figure it out, um, and push it forward with the twelve million dollars on the bond to the warrant. Uh, make the call to the state SRF fund, and see if uh if if they'll they'll be able to increase us to twelve million dollars or or ten million dollars. And then if not, at the deliberative session, you can always cut it back um to what you need to do. Um, the other thing you could do is by that time, we could speak to legal and and have 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 the legal opinion as if we can use two separate pots of money, and is that legal? Um, ten million dollars from the state, because if you look at the way the bond language reads in in the bond in the warrant article, it talks about Article two. Article two, it talks about um and authorize the issuance of not more than ten million dollars of bonds, notes in accordance with the provision of Municipal Finance Act RSA thirty-three, and to authorize the town council to issue negotiations, bonds, and notes, and determine a rate of interest thereon, and to further authorize the town council apply for, obtain, accept any federal, state, or other aid grants, other funds that may be made available in conjunction with said purpose to reduce the amount of the bonds. So the the way that is written, it's it's pretty open-ended, that you can go for grants, you can go get state funding, um, and that's why we're saying the ten million, but we're only bonding eight million. So, in there, because that's the way the language reads. Doesn't read that we're only bonding eight million dollars, eight point one million, we're bonding, we're asking for the, to approve the appropriation of ten million dollars. We'd ask, we'd ask the community to approve the appropriation of the twelve million dollars. And then we could figure
And then we would negotiate whatever bonds necessary and and grants to make that amount of money.
Amount of money, work.
It's what the words say.
Right, so that's what you're, you remember, we're gross appropriating here.
Right.
Right. Nancy?
So, Sarita, if I'm if I'm understanding this correctly, Sarita could call and find out if it's possible. Would probably be able to get an answer reasonably soon, if we could increase it to twelve million with a two grant, two million grant.
So what I will do tomorrow is I will call the state, I will call um the individual who's responsible for generating that list, and I will ask her if we can change the amount that we requested. And as soon as I have that answer, I'll send it to the town manager.
And if the answer is no, in the meantime, could you be asking if the, with the attorneys, if the answer is no, is this possible? Cause if you can get an answer to that, if the answer is no, you've already got the answer.
Mm-hmm. Right? Yes, yes.
So I think we could do a, it sounds, do you think it will be reasonably quick response?
Uh, with the state?
Not a commitment, but I mean, if it's really, if the answer is no, they're gonna tell you pretty fast, I think.
We got, we received our ARPA money in, what, March of last year?
Yeah.
Right, so they received it at pretty much the same time. They didn't give us an answer until October, November of anything, so I can't promise it'll be quick.
Okay, but if we have the backup already planned for, then it's not as much of a crisis, because if it comes down to two months from now, you get an answer, yes, well, great, you don't have to use that backup. If the answer is no, the backup is already established, if if you have approval.
I might make this very easy for us.
Even better.
Sarita, how much is the um the chlorination building roughly?
Right now?
Well, yeah, what we're what we're planning on doing.
So I haven't received a quote, I think it's going to be around one point five million.
Okay, how, and then what, nine hundred thousand dollars for the salt shed?
The sawdust building. Yeah, the sawdust building, nine hundred thousand about.
Right, so right now, we're using one point five million dollars of ARPA. We have one point two million dollars left. We can fix the chlorination building using the remaining of the ARPA money and the um just using a couple hundred thousand dollars from our capital reserve fund.
So we have three hundred thousand dollars left?
Left in the project.
And the project loan, yeah, so we can use that.
So the chlorination building is off the table, okay? The salt shed, which is about nine hundred thousand dollars. So sorry.
It's okay. It's close.
The the reason why I keeps, I'm sorry, the reason why I keep saying salt shed is because that's the kind of building we're gonna build for the sawdust. Is kinda like what we have at six, eighty Baboosacook Road. Eighty Turkey Hill Road.
It's just not that late, Paul.
It says it's one thirty on my watch.
Oh, okay.
And then and then the the nine hundred thousand dollars for the salt shed, we'd have to look at that, but but
We all understand, so keep going.
Keep going.
The sawdust shed.
We'll fix all the mess.
I got it.
Okay, yeah, good. Sawdust shed that we're building, the nine hundred thousand dollars, we'd have to look at, looking, maybe we could take that out of some capital reserve funding, and maybe have to push a project or two down the road. But we can get both of these projects done without changing the bond amount, if the state comes back and says.
No way.
No way. So we can do this. There's, I have all the confidence in the world that we can get those two projects done.
Okay.
That's what I wanted to hear.
The important thing is, you need to know is it's gonna get done.
We can get these projects.
One way or another.
So we need chlorine.
Right.
We do need chlorine.
But we can get that done, we can use the one point two million dollars or whatever we have remaining in ARPA money after one point five, and the three hundred thousand dollars, which is our contingency fund.
So that was me thinking what it is, I don't have the hard numbers.
But even if not, we have, we have other funding sources that we can get that chlorine building done.
Correct.
And we probably can get the sawdust shed done as well.
Okay.
So we can look at projects that we push.
So one other thing for the sawdust shed is if, as we come to the end of the project, so the reason you want to do chlorine also is because you don't want to extend that project timeline. You just don't want to do it because it costs a lot of money, but we have a contingency of eight hundred thousand dollars in the project itself. And we use it because lots of things happen in a project, and if there's some leftover, that can help offset.
Right. So I am saying right now, I'm giving you my word, I believe we can do both of those projects.
Okay, I won't oversell it, sorry.
I believe we can do both of those projects. First of all, we can do the chlorine, because chlorine.
Don't go away.
The chlorine, the chlorine building is EPA coming down on us.
Right, right.
And I believe we can do that with, at that same time, because you're gonna give me the request to bring them both back, to use the rest of the ARPA money, and we could split it out. The one point five for the latter, the remaining amount for the chlorine building, figure out what it's roughly gonna be, and then come up with those. But I can guarantee you, we'll get the chlorine building done, and we'll do our best to get the sawdust shed completed as well.
In the meantime, you're gonna find out.
Yes, I will. I will call tomorrow.
So earlier you were talking about in dire straits that you needed to replace four huge pumps that were recirculating, or something like that, is that the chlorine building?
Yes, so they're in the basement of the chlorine building. The chlorine building houses our hypo system, which disinfects the water, I bought by sulfide system, which kind of acts as a counter to chlorine, because you don't want to send chlorine bleach to the river, you'll kill everything. And then downstairs, we have our washwater system, so that's the thing I talked about, where we use three hundred and fifty thousand gallons a day of return water to, and we save about six hundred and eighty thousand dollars a year, because we're reusing our own water versus taking in Penachuk's water. Also downstairs, we have a bunch of basket strainers that take care of our contact chambers, and then what we also have is we have these four big huge pumps, and that's our return activated sledge pumps, so.
So the four big huge pumps is the one and a half million, or just the entire chlorine building, which you were gonna do most of anyway, but you needed to get these four pumps as well?
So it's the four pumps, it's all the controls and electrical, because the electrical there is circa nineteen seventy, so it's not really up to code. So it's to bring the new controls in, the new cabinets in, it's also to update the electrical room in the chlorine building. So the way it works now is you have two things with electrical, you have the actual running the equipment, and then you have communications with the equipment. We don't, we operate twenty-four seven, but as the town manager pointed out, is we have these people on call. So there has to be communications to the, what we call a SCADA system, that talks to the computer, and then if there's a problem, it calls out, and it lets these people know that something's going on. So to be honest with you, the biggest part of the cost is the electrical and communications. That's what, that's what's really hurt us in the last year and a half.
Okay, thanks. So I think we want to go forward with paying for the truck, you need some kind of a comment from the council?
More I think about this, I think we should make a motion to move to the warrant, the one point five million dollar bond, because that's what was agended. Take that vote, you gotta make it in a positive way, so to move to the warrant, the one point five million dollar bond for the fire truck, take the vote, we know the vote's gonna fail, after the vote fails, request that I bring it back using ARPA funds.
So we're looking for a motion to move the one point five million dollar bond article for the fire truck.
Knowing that it's gonna fail. So moved.
Moved by Finley, seconded by Nancy Harrington. Do you want to talk to that?
No.
I'm recommending my fellow councilman here.
We're not, we haven't been talking about actually passing that.
So the motion is for the bond.
The motion is to move it, so.
But we're basically voting no.
We've been talking about not bonding it, so you would want to vote no, if you don't want to bond the fire truck.
Right, through the bond.
Seeing that, call for a vote, all those in favor of the motion to move the one point five million dollar bond to the warrant, signified by saying no. Any opposed? And any abstaining?
So one, six, zero.
So that fails, one, six, zero, with Longwoods in favor.
Wait, that felt weird.
I know.
So now we need a motion to request that you bring it by a recommendation?
Just request.
So I would, as chair, I'm gonna request that you bring this back as an option to use ARPA funds to pick up the, to build, to buy the fire truck. If nobody's in objection to that, we'll move forward.
Okay, so I will be bringing in either the twenty-fourth or the tenth of March.
And we'll talk about that.
An article at that time, for the latter truck to be part with ARPA money.
Okay. Thank you very much. You're not leaving though, right?
Nope.
Is there anything else we need to do with wastewater treatment?
Exactly. Yeah, we have to have a public hearing on the wastewater treatment. That's item number two.
God.
All the way up to item number two.
I feel better though, that we're doing both.
The public hearing for the public, for the wastewater treatment facility phase five, submitted by Town Council Chair Tom Koenig and Vice Chair Finley Rothaus. Town Council, we hold a public hearing to receive a public input on a proposed issuance of debt of ten million one hundred and two thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars for wastewater treatment upgrades to the wastewater piping, compost facility, headworks building, and the new screening building, as well as ADA improvements and other miscellaneous upgrades to the main plant.
It was a washwater pipe, I don't know that it's critical.
Oh, upgrades to, what did I say?
Wastewater.
Oh, washwater piping. Thank you.
Washwater piping, salt sheds, sawdust sheds, it's all the same.
All the details. As printed in the agenda.
Right, I have a, once again, a, hopefully a compressed version of the bond that, the presentation that Sarita did, and she's here to answer any questions as well as Kyle. But the cost of the project is ten million one hundred and two thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars. Construction costs are eight million seven hundred and five thousand dollars, there's a contingency of five percent, and then there's engineering cost of ten percent, so that comes out to the ten million. Through NHDS announced availability of the ARPA grant Clean Water, we submitted a pre-application, and we qualified for a twenty percent match up to two million dollars for this grant, for this program. So the cost of the project, the ten million one oh two seven fifty, would actually be eight million one oh two seven fifty after the two million dollars. The twenty-year bond schedule at two and a half percent would be about two million dollars worth of interest, to bring the total bond payments of ten million two twenty-nine seven twenty-one and eighty-eight cents. This would not affect the rate that we have proposed of the twelve percent, and then the five percent, two years after that. We could do that within the means of what we have. We just had a lengthy discussion about the chlorination building and the salt shed, the sawdust shed. So, you know, like I said, we have ARPA money left over of one point two million dollars, and we have some other money throughout, as you can see, because the big twenty-two million dollar bond also has some contingency funds, and I don't know where we stand with those as of this time, but there are some contingency funds there too. So we can combine the two to get that project done, and then we do have some capital reserve funds as well, that we can look into spending if we need to get that project done. I believe Sarita said it's about, she's estimating about one point five million dollars, even if it is, comes in, say, at one point seven, I think, or even two million. Two million, we'll be pushing it, but I think we can get it done, with what we have between the one point two and then contingencies and capital reserve funds. The other portion of it, like she said, was the, was the sawdust shed, and in this one, we do have some contingency of four hundred thousand dollars, so we can use some of that money as well if we need it, to do what we need to do on it. Like I said, it does increase the cost right now. It's a project that is needed to help offset some of our long-term costs, but we've been living for, with about two years now that we have not had a sawdust shed. The other one was, was so dilapidated that it's basically needs to be torn down, because it is a hazard that we have over there, so. I know it's not ideal, but we can get the work done that we need to get done.
So are you proposing that we continue to go forward with the ten million number, or should that number be raised to twelve million, or something like that?
Right now.
We can always revise.
We can always revise it at the deliberative session if need be, if we get the approval from DES that we can raise it to twelve million dollars. We'll know that answer right then, at that time, and we'll have a better understanding, because we'll have a quote on what it's gonna cost for the chlorination building, and we'll have a better quote of what it's gonna cost for sawdust by the time we go to deliberative session as well.
Do we have enough time, if, I'm just thinking, if push comes to shove and numbers don't add up, do we have enough time to go for an additional two million dollar bond, between now and deliberative session?
Before you try to answer that, if we change this number to twelve million, we have the option as a town council to negotiate the bonds however we need to, right? So if we negotiated eight million from the sewer revolving fund and two million from.
I see what you're saying.
Some other source.
Right.
That would.
So that would take care of it.
Cover the ten million.
All the options.
Still have the two million dollar grant.
You could hedge your bet and increase this and make it twelve million one oh two seven fifty, if that's.
That leaves the options open.
Leave some of your options open later on.
That's what I was concerned about.
And I like that, because, you know, at the end of the day, I think Tom put it best, you know, we say it's user-funded, and if we could keep it user-funded by putting this on a bond, I think that would be my first option. Now, you know, if we got into a place where we, you know, we needed to get this done, and it wasn't accounted for in a bond, and it was too late to do that, and we came here in March and said we wanted to use the leftover one point two, you know, I would probably do that, but my first option would be to keep it user-funded. User-funded, out of the impact fees.
So what you can do is you can increase this to twelve million one hundred and two thousand, or thirteen million, or, I would go twelve, another two.
Go what?
Go up to twelve million, another two million on top of it, so it'd be twelve million as the gross appropriate amount. But you need to open up a public hearing on ten million.
Okay, that's what I would like to do at this point, would be to increase that number. You're saying that twelve million is the number you would recommend?
Twelve one seven.
Twelve point one oh two?
No, I'm so high.
Well, you said that one point seven million was what you were gonna be missing if we took away the one and a half, so now I'm wondering why we have to go higher.
Because what I also said is that we have to go to vote, then we have to go to get quotes, and when they give the quotes, we may not get this project done by September of next year, in fact, I can guarantee it, because they'll have to go and do all sorts of different things. So you have to extend the project by maybe up to a year, so the two million or the three point four million may not be enough at that point in time, because there are costs associated with them being on-site every month, with maintaining their equipment, it's bringing their equipment, it's bringing their trailers, it's all of that. So they have a monthly cost for that.
But if I gave you the cash today, what would you do? Would you find some other contractor to come in to do that job?
Well, we're getting a quote from them to do that job, but if they were to get the money sooner, they wouldn't have to extend it. So for example, we've already had this conversation, it is a fourteen-week lead time for some of the motor control panels that we need for those four pumps. What they said they're going to do in their schedule is rather than extending the project by fourteen weeks, because they couldn't get it done within the timeline right now, they would do all of the work that they needed to do to bring those motor control panels electrically online, and then they would just come back and do that. That may not be an option if they don't have the ability to schedule all that work now. We also have, right now, we have duck banks going in, and that is to bring extra electrical for the chlorine, secondary clarifiers. If they were to put this all together, they would run the electrical for all of the clarifiers and everything at once. But if they don't have it, well, then they go and they backfill everything, MayPave or what have you, and then they have to go back later and do rework. So that means they open up those holes, they have to run new lines, or they have to run new systems in there. So it's a scheduling type of situation.
So I understand that, but this bond's not gonna get up to vote until April, so if this bond is ten million or it's twelve million, what difference is it gonna make as far as their scheduling is concerned? That's where I'm, I'm losing it, you're saying it may take an extra year, because we don't have this two million cash in our hand right now, but.
So you get the bond, it gets approved in April, you go out to bid, you don't get the bid, you have to prepare the bid packages, you don't get the bid packages till sometime in July or August. Then you have to award it, that takes another six to eight weeks, so you're not awarding this contract till sometime September. So it, just because you received the bond, just because you have the bond approval, it takes time from the time you get the bond approval to go out to bid, to get the award, and also to work with the state to actually get the loan.
Okay, but this eight million or ten million that we're talking about in this particular bond right now is gonna be in that situation.
I can clarify.
Okay. Thank you, Sarita.
The duck banks that she's talking about is in the twenty-two point six million dollar bond. That's already being worked on.
Being worked on.
If we said to them, we have two million dollars in cash. They can say, okay, great, here we go, we can continue to do this, we can bring in the extra wires, things of that sort. What happened is, is that if we say, no, you gotta wait till April, they might be done, in July, we go out, we get the bids back, say, in August, they might already have been, this spring, doing those duck banks, bringing the electrical in for those clarifiers and things of that sort. And then we'd have, they would have to reopen everything, and run more wire and more, everything else. It'd be cheaper for them in the short term, what Sarita's saying, it's cheaper for them to do it all at once upfront now, than to have to come back and redo it. It's just like.
So the one point five million that we're taking away.
Right.
For the fire truck. Is causing that company to say, no, that's, we don't have that full amount now. We don't have the two point, whatever.
Two point four, yes, the two point.
So the difference between the two point four and the one point five.
But don't forget, the thing is, is that if you go out to bond, that's a different scenario. Then if we use the remaining one point two million dollars and come up with the delta some other way with cash, that's a different scenario than bonding it in April. What Councilor Koenig's asking is, if we don't come up, Sarita's saying we don't get any money in, out of the ARPA money, we get nothing. If we go out to bond, and this is part of the projects that we go out to bond, it's not one point seven million dollars anymore, it might be two point four million dollars that you would need to add.
But if they get the difference? What if they get the difference?
But if they get the difference with ARPA money, then it's not, it's not the 2.4. It would be, you know, we can make it work.
Right.
But what we're trying to do, I guess, is kind of hedge the bets a little bit and say, we need, we're not going to give any ARPA money to the project.
That's some people.
Right, but we're not giving any money. And then how much is it going to cost? Sarita's just saying that it's not just 2 million dollars. If that's the case, it's 2.7 or whatever it might be. That's where she was coming from with her answer that it's not just 2 million dollars added on for just that project.
I mean, I do understand Andy, your point about not giving any ARPA money. But I honestly feel that the difference should be given to them. That's all. Because you're saying, if I'm understanding you correctly, it's because for the whole town versus a segment of the town that has the benefit of the sewage.
Well, yeah, just like Tom said, this should be user supported, user funded. And if we're going to try to keep it that way, the right way to do it would be to go out on bond and have the users pay that bond. Understand it would be quicker, more convenient. But it would be quicker, more convenient if you just put this in the operating budget and threw it on the, you know. But that's not the right thing to do.
But it's not, the only water going to the wastewater treatment plant is not just sewage. It's all the drainage areas that we have for town.
I thought the drainage was
Not anymore, not anymore.
Then I would be wrong.
EPA, close your ears.
Sorry about that. I was just trying to help, but I think I made it worse.
I'll help for you.
You're absolutely right, I'm sorry.
Since you opened the door.
I was trying to figure out how to help.
So you're correct in that there are other sources that come to the plant from Merrimack. Primarily septic, anyone who cleans their septic tank, that also comes to us. And they pay that fee as well, which is based on what we charge them. So there are, even those not connected do use our facility.
Trying to get the benefit.
Campers use it. So there are a lot of other users in town beyond those that are just connected.
And that's important. People that are having their septic tanks pumped are using that sewer system, wastewater treatment system as well. So it isn't that only the people that are hooked up to sewer benefit from it. But
That's what I meant.
Probably a significant less benefit. Certainly not a monthly benefit.
Well, and thank you for that clarification because for me, that changes a lot. So thank you.
You're welcome.
But those people are paying the user fee then. But I have no problem using some of the ARPA money because of the cost savings that it will offer. Because I'm now understanding exactly what Sarita was saying. Because it would have to be postponed without that liquid cash, I guess. And so for this purpose of efficiencies in doing the project and getting those savings, I'm not opposed to using the difference in that ARPA money.
Yeah, you got me on board too.
So even if I was wrong, we got to the right answer.
Yes. Your wrong answer convinced me, thank you.
Salt sheds.
At least it stimulated the conversation.
Drainage.
February 10th, Nancy was wrong. She was wrong but right.
But the outcome was good.
Nancy Harrington, sorry Nancy.
So, so that
So where did we end up with that? Does it make sense to change that number or not?
From what I'm hearing from just the discussions we're having right now, it seems like the chlorine building is going to get done using ARPA money and additional money.
Creative financing.
You know, capital reserve funds or contingencies.
Should we still increase it to 12 though, to give you that flexibility?
You could increase it to 12.
Because you're only going to use what you need.
Yeah, we're only going to bond what we need on it.
We still have to justify it.
You know.
Right.
Yeah.
From my comfort level, I'm willing to carry this forward this evening, but I would
Sorry about that, Justin, thank you. I'm willing to carry this forward, but I would like a bit more clarity in where we're pulling this from on the more minor components that you're meshing together.
I guess I gotta get a, I can tell you what we're going to do. But without having that number that's not in concrete but in quick cement, that, to figure out where we're going to go, with how we're going to proceed.
At least he's not going to correct anything I say.
No, I was just going to offer a suggestion. We'd be happy to come back on the 24th or March 10th with a presentation on how we would propose to fund what we needed to with the remaining ARPA funding, because you guys would have to approve that anyway. You know, we'd be happy to be prepared at that point.
Great, I appreciate that.
I was going to bring a phone anyways, but
Yeah, he was coming whether he
He was coming whether he offered or not. We were going to do both of them at the same night.
Do you have enough time? I mean, I know that
Yeah, I have enough time to pull it. Probably going to be, probably going to be March 10th. Because it's, we're waiting on a vendor to give us a price. And that, we just got to tell them to sharpen their pencils and give us an estimate, I guess. Or our engineer to give us an estimate.
But in terms of the bond thing?
In terms of the bond thing, I would, right now, my gut's telling me to stick with what we've already approved and what the council already heard is the 10 million dollars. Because like I said, we can get the Coronation Building done with other money that we need to do. As long as it doesn't come back.
This would have been a lot faster if you started out with that.
I did.
He had to convince us. We had to act like we knew we were doing something. So you don't need the trial to help.
I think that's just going to confuse things, honestly.
So
All right.
We still need to open a public hearing?
Yes, we do.
We'll open the public hearing at 9:59. On the bond warrant article for the sewer treatment plant Phase 5. All those who have comments, questions, suggestions, et cetera, should come forward to speak about it now. Seeing none, we're going to close the public hearing at 10. And then we're going to, before we go any further, we're going to look for a motion to carry on this meeting past 10 o'clock.
So moved.
It was moved by
Or seconded.
And then seconded by Lon to extend our meeting past 10 o'clock. Does anybody have any comments? Seeing none, call for a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, any opposed or abstaining? That passes 7:00. So we've opened and closed the public hearing. So now we need a motion to move
Move the bond.
The bond of the wastewater treatment facility. Phase 5 to the warrant.
So moved.
Moved by Andy, seconded by Nancy Murphy. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, any opposed or abstaining? That passes 7:00. So we're through all of our public hearings and item number one under new business.
Got it down.
There's a couple, three, there are three more items on our agenda plus minutes. Number three, number two, under new business, Fire Station Capital Reserve Fund Withdrawal Request. See what it says on the agenda itself. Submitted by Fire Chief Mark DeFranzo, the town council to consider the fire and rescue department's request to withdraw $30,000 from the Fire Station Capital Reserve Fund for the purpose of hiring a consulting firm to review and provide recommendations as it relates to a fire station location study. I feel like I'm getting flashing in my eyes. This thing's bright.
Definitely flashing.
Oh, yeah, I have one.
She did write one.
Legislative updates, I'm sorry. We skipped all over that. We did receive an update from Representative Maureen Mooney.
Rosemary too.
I, you did? What time did she send it?
You can do it, Mooney, while I check.
6:30. For a 7 o'clock meeting. One year ago, according to Representative Maureen Mooney, greetings. One year ago, we were preparing for the House hearing on HB 478, an act relative to treatment of PFAS contaminants in the drinking water of the Merrimack Village Water District. The town council wrote and signed the attached letter in support of the bill. See the letter attached. HB 478 has now passed through the full house and we're awaiting the Senate hearing. The Senate hearing has not been scheduled yet. She would respectfully ask that you adopt, sign and submit a letter similar to the one attached. Please address the letter to the members of the Senate Energy and National Resources Committee, Senators Avar, Guido, Gray, Waters and Perkins-Guaca, as well as Committee Assistant Frinet. Number two, HB 1547, an act setting maximum contaminant levels for floral chemicals in the soil. Received and ought to pass with amendment recommendation from its House committee. We hope this bill is, as amended, passes through the full house next week and goes on to the Senate. The bill idea came from a brainstorming meeting, excuse me, last summer of Merrimack community activists and legislators. The bill amendment came from the exceptional collaboration among community activists, legislators and the New Hampshire Department of Environmental Services. The bill as amended will, A, allow the Commissioner of NHDES to initiate rules for soil remediation standards for floral chemicals by November 1 of 2023 because the United States Geological Survey is performing a study in New Hampshire of its soil due by the fall of 2022. And B, amend the Groundwater Protection Act Rulemaking Section RSA 485-C, colon, 4, comma, Roman numeral 8 to add soil and that a quote unquote person liable for such contamination provides safe alternate water to an impacted well owner. Parentheses, note, the term quote person unquote includes companies and public or private corporations per RSA 485-C, colon, 2, Roman numeral 11. Respectfully submitted by Representative Maureen Mooney. And she included the letter. The committee to, well, it's going to the Senate, Energy and Natural Resources Committee. And she asked that we consider sending the letter, which we can consider in a future meeting, maybe on the 24th. And that's what we have from Maureen, she included the letter that we had sent so that we can use it as a sample if we want to. I'm going to suggest in the future, if people are going to send in written comments, they get them in before 5 on the night of our meeting so that we have a chance to operate with it. That was the wrong button. That was too.
And a call maybe just to say, hey, check your email.
Yeah, I mean, because I checked it earlier and saw Maureen's, I didn't see Rosemarie's, which came in at 6:33.
Oh, you got it?
I want to update you on my bill HB 1185. This is from Rosemarie Rung, which among its cosponsors includes Merrimack Representatives Maureen Mooney, Bill Boyd and Bob Healy. As amended, the bill would allow municipalities to regulate the amount of PFAS and commercial and industrial discharges entering their wastewater treatment facilities. Municipalities are also empowered to issue and collect fines for those in violation with the collected fines remaining with the municipality. The amendment distinguishes clearly that residential septic is not held to the same requirements but allows the wastewater treatment facility to test it in order to assess PFAS entering the plant from this source. Not only will this bill provide local control to wastewater treatment facilities, but it serves as a strong incentive to commercial and industrial users of PFAS to reduce the levels in their wastewater stream and likely this may reduce their overall use of PFAS in their operations. The bill as amended has unanimous bipartisan support with, for an ought to pass recommendation and will appear on the New Hampshire House Consent Calendar. I will keep you updated as it proceeds to the Senate. My deepest gratitude goes to Ms. Sarita Croce for her excellent contributions to the crafting of this bill and for testifying before the House Committee. We are extremely fortunate to have her serving the town of Merrimack. Rosemarie Rung, New Hampshire State Rep. Okay, so that covers our updates from state reps. Chief, thanks for your patience, I appreciate it. We have no consent agenda, town managers report.
In the interest of time, I will forego my report.
Thank you. We have no old business, which brings us to the Fire Station Capital Reserve Fund discussion that I mentioned earlier with Chief DeFranzo.
Thank you, I appreciate you taking the time to, hopefully we'll go through these slides pretty quickly. You have a copy of them, so if you have any questions as we go, feel free to ask. But I thought it prudent for me to kind of go over some things as we go forward.
Is that what this is? I'm sorry.
So again, the request is for $30,000 to do, have a firm come in and do a study on the fire stations we have. Are they in the right locations? I think we can all agree it's time to look at the infrastructure of the fire department and its stations that operates. And if we're going to be investing millions of dollars in facilities, whether we stay where we are or we move or we build new, I want to make sure we put them in the right locations. You know, we're talking a lot of money and if we don't do it right, well, then we would have just thrown the money away, you know, needlessly. So I thought it prudent to kind of bring in an outside agency that this is what they do, this is their bread and butter. They'll provide us hopefully some good information to give you and me the opportunity to make good decisions. So that's kind of what we're going to go through tonight very quickly. So I thought I'd bring a little history to some of the stations that we've had over our time here as Merrimack Fire. So Station 1, during my research, I guess, was a building that was received from a carpentry shop across the street from where it sits, our fire station sits now. And that was the original first fire station, that was sometime in 1924. The current station was built in front of that. And actually, what we see today is actually expansion number two. The first station was built in 1959. From what I understand, that would not have even been possible without a donation from the Gordon family. So thank you to the Gordon families for getting the station, the first station built where it currently sits. The first expansion added a second floor, which is what you guys see in this picture, that roof line is the addition on top of the original structure. The second expansion is what we see today, the apparatus floor out front, the apparatus bay that sits out to the side and off the back. And then where all of the administrative offices are now on the backside of the building. That was expansion number two. And the equipment that we currently house in that facility is Engine 1, Ladder 1, Ambulance 1, Rescue 1, Ambulance 3, Engine 4 and Forestry 1. We also, in the summertime or when the nicer weather comes, we move in the boats and those types of things so they're readily accessible for us to have. So a lot of equipment is stored in this one big facility that we own. Station 2 was originally a one-car garage for the most part. It sat on land donated from the South Merrimack Congregational Church. Back in 1944, the area residents fundraised all the monies to get the equipment and build that little building out front of the church. And then in 1945, the town decided to bring that South Merrimack Station into the auspices of Merrimack Fire Department. In 1972, land was donated from the Savage family to build Station 2. The first expansion added living quarters, Engine 2 and Ambulance 2 were housed there. So the living quarters is that white section off to the right. The original structure was only the brick where the two trucks park. Because back in the day, they were a call department, there was no, nobody staying at the station. So as time has progressed and we found we needed to staff the station, the building needed to be expanded to allow for that. Reed's Ferry, that land was acquired from New England Chemical to build that one-car garage as well, for a truck to be placed there. And then in 1972, with land donated from GE, the current Station 3 or Reed's Ferry Station is where it sits now. And Engine 3, Engine 5, Forestry 3, our ATV unit and the boats off-season go up there to keep them out of the weather and to give us a little more room. At headquarters, especially when we got to bring the utility truck in and be prepared for any snow events that we get. So gives us a little more room. And then I guess from what I learned from my research was in 2000, the town purchased land for a possible Northwest Fire Station to be located somewhere near Boosick Lake Road and McQuestion Road. But that land was also to be shared with Parks and Rec. So that was what I had learned. But again, that never came to fruition, so I'm not sure exactly where that all stands or what we'd like to do with that. So I guess by bringing in an outside consultant to help us with these big decisions that we need to make might be, you know, well worth what we're going to do. So again, determining the locations of fire stations are decisions that last for decades, as I've just shown. I mean, these buildings that we've had have been a long time, they're over 50 years of age for the most part. And when you talk to subject matter experts, you should only get about 50 years out of a public safety facility. So we've done pretty well by expanding. So, we've done pretty well by expanding and doing what we can to improve and, you know, make things work, I guess. But it's time to really take a hard look and decide what next steps we need to take as we decide to move forward as a community. So, the prudent use of public resources requires that we make these choices using the best information possible. A facility's location and deployment plan is a comprehensive assessment of current emergency services and the response workload of the organization. It includes a historical review, as well as an analysis of future community growth as it affects the organization's potential response workload. We all can agree that this town has expanded over time. Our call volume has, you know, steadily increased as we start to put more homes and apartment buildings and condo units and townhouses and, you know, commercial applications, all those things. The call volume just, you know, exponentially increases. Then also, the risk of a fire in any one of those buildings or facilities. You know, we've got to make sure we have a plan, or what are we going to do? So, the study will hopefully perform and look at all aspects of what we do. So, to look at the fire service, the community development, finance, city administration. The objectives we hope to accomplish with this will be to define the current level of service being provided, identify geographic areas not receiving the desired level of service. And we know that already, the area over by Babusak Lake, we don't have any facility, and it's a long time for a piece of equipment, whether it's an ambulance or a fire truck, to get there. It's a long run. Some other objectives, hopefully, the project impact of future growth and development, because there's more building to do. So, if we're going to invest money, so let's figure out what do we think the town might look like in the future, and can we plan for that as we start to decide what we're going to need for facilities? And identify deployment alternative for facilities, personnel, and apparatus. So, current and desired performance, we base against national standards such as ISO, which decides your homeowner's insurance rates, and also the commercial application for insurance, fire insurance for those facilities as well. And then the NFPA 1710 and 1720, as well as other national standards, will be used to determine outcomes that we would like to see. So, one of the things that NFPA looks at and they consider is response times. And they do it just on a, you know, general basis. So, the first engine should get there in four minutes, second engine should get there in eight, a ladder company should get there in eight, and a chief officer should get there in eight once the original call comes into the department. And I think we talked about this last time, even with the ladder truck. You know, the longer it takes for us to get there, the more potential for flashover and, you know, unrestrained fire growth. So, this is just a quick, you know, graph and chart to kind of show you, the longer it takes, the more fire that we have to deal with. And then there's just some things that we don't have any control over, which is, how long does it take for someone to report it? Because we can't move until we know. And then, once we know, then we can make decisions on, you know, how fast do we want to get there? And, you know, where do we want to put stations and things like that? And then EMS response, basic life support should arrive within four minutes, and advanced life support within eight. And as, you know, I'm sure you've heard from other speakers past, you know, CPR is a huge component of survivability if someone were to be in a cardiac arrest situation, you know. And then, I guess, today, we just had someone who we were able to resuscitate, stopped by the station this evening to say thank you to the staff that, you know, was on call that night. So, hopefully, maybe we can get them to come in and, you know, say a few words to you guys, because I think it's important. You know, those things are true miracles when they occur. And if we don't have the right staffing and equipment and training, we won't be able to have successful outcomes like that. So, you know, putting fire stations in the right locations helps us get to those types of situations sooner and quicker. So, analysis must be conducted that extensively utilizes the community's geographic information systems data. We have all of this information, and we need to be able to utilize that and make good decisions. You know, if we're taking data and not doing anything, then why are we collecting it? So, I think we should take advantage of what we have for information systems and try to figure out, based on that data, which we can get from computer-aided dispatch at the police department, our incident reports, community center lines and layouts, which they'll get from that GIS data, all of the road infrastructure that we have, the build-outs that have already happened, what we think we're going to do in the future by talking to community development. You know, we could put all those things together and kind of come up with decisions on where we think locations should be. But this is a labor-intensive effort to put all this together, especially to put all that data together. Because when you start looking at, you know, what kind of incidents do we go to? You know, you've got auto accidents, you've got false alarms. You start to plot all of those things out, well, it means something. How many times do you go to these facilities or those areas? Because maybe you need to put a fire station in that particular area. Or do we just go with a regular response model? Four minutes, we want this. Eight minutes, we want that. So, depending upon what we get for data and what decisions we decide to make will hopefully give us a plan and a direction on what we want to do. So, as always, and, you know, that's the government motto. We're always tasked to do more with less. So, the need for a focused review of facilities and deployment options becomes critical. If we're going to invest all this money, well, we need to make sure we do it right. A strategic placement of fire stations within the community is vital to providing efficient and effective fire department programs and services. And without good planning for fire station locations, response to fires, medical emergencies, and other calls for service by the public may be negatively impacted by increased response times of first arriving and backup fire companies or other factors that contribute to the number and location of fire stations include budgetary limitations. Again, we don't have unlimited funds. We have to take what we have and figure out how to best invest those. Available property, you know, while we think we want a fire station at X, well, we may not be able to afford to put it on X. So, what other alternatives can we look at and afford? And then, the public's perceived level of risk. You know, I've always told people, we're an insurance policy. How much do you want to ensure we're going to show up at a timeframe to help you out? You know, if you want the Cadillac service, well, then you pay for that. But if you don't want the Cadillac service, you're taking a lot of risk by not investing in us being able to respond to your need when you have that need. So, obviously, we're also going to look at pre-existing locations, access barriers, including terrain, transportation right-ofways, and bodies of water, unique local conditions, because all of that determines travel time and how fast we can get there. You know, the other night, there was a crash up on DW Highway there, or whatever turnpike, and that backed up all the traffic here in town of DW. I was amazed at the backup that we had here in town. And that was only 5:00, 6:00 o'clock at night. And this is winter time. So, I can just imagine, if summertime, that traffic volume's going to, you know, exponentially increase. And then, how do we get around when we need to get out? So, and get to someone that needs our help. So, once we start to get all this information together, final decisions of what is acceptable response distances and response to fire station locations will be up to the community leaders, which is, you know, you guys, at the end of the day, I want to get you information to make good, educated decisions, not opinions. I think it should be factual-based, data-driven, because that's, you can't dispute data and facts. I mean, it is what it is. And then, we get to make good decisions from there. So, again, I'm requesting $30,000 funding to come from the Fire Station Capital Reserve Fund. And if anybody's got questions, again, I thank you for listening to me for, hopefully, just a quick few minutes. I was hoping to bring a little levity. I knew it was going to be a late night, so, you know, I appreciate your time. And, you know, like I said in my memo to you guys, it's not lost on me that these things are going to cost a lot of money. But I want to make sure that you understand. I understand that, and I want to make sure we give you good information to make decisions. And when we need something, we have the documentation and data to back up that need request, not just a whim request.
Any questions for the chief?
So, I just want to make sure, because I've heard discussions about a safety complex. So, will this take police into account, this study as well? Or is this strictly best place for a fire department?
It's actually looking at a couple of different things. Right now, when we were looking at the safety complex, the old chief said, you gotta be within a half mile of Babusak Lake Road. If the study shows us that we might not need to be in a half mile of Babusak Lake Road, but we may need to put something up by Bishop Field, which is the land that the chief was talking about, we might still do a safety complex, but it might look a little bit different than what we were anticipating at the beginning. You know, we might, I don't know. And really, that's what we need to know, is the response times and other things. We have done this internally, and we've really never got a great... You know, I used to go into the conference room in the fire department, and there was maps all over the wall saying, yeah, it took us seven minutes to get here. It took us 12 minutes to get here. And there was never anything put in a document to say, you know, here we go at this time of night. This is where we need to be. This is, you know, it's taken us XYZ to get to the lake. It's taken us XYZ to get to Anheuser-Busch area. We've never had that. So, a long-winded answer is to say, this will take into account that it may be placement of where a safety complex might be better suited for the town. Remember, the police station is on the road. They can be anywhere in town for a safety complex. The fire department needs to be strategically placed so that we get the best utilization of the resources in a timely manner to the individuals. So, yeah, it's going to actually lead towards where we're going to place a safety complex.
Right. Nancy?
Will it also consider alternatives? The safety complex is one idea, but there are other options, and would that also be considered?
It's, this study will show you where fire stations should be placed throughout town. So, we might, they might say, you got the two stations. Might just, those are good places for them. We just need a third station at XYZ. And then, we'd have to make a determination of, okay, we build a satellite at XYZ. What do we do with the police department now?
Okay, so it's not going to be started with the intention of looking at just the safety complex.
No, it's the intention of where to place stations in town.
Right.
Yeah, this is a study to look at, where should fire stations be located? And the town manager is correct.
How should the fire department address the needs of the community?
Yeah. Police stations, you know, like you said, the police cars are on the road, and they bring, I call them their guests. They bring their guests to them. So, there's really no, you know, central need for them to be centrally located in town. So, for us, like the town manager described, we need to be strategically located. And you can certainly add on to wherever the fire station needs to be. And you can pick any one of those sites to add on a police side or whatever it is that you feel you want to do, if you chose to go that direction with a combined system instead of having two separate. But this will give you options.
Got you. Finley?
I'm not necessarily opposed to spending the $30,000 for this, but I'm just thinking about what is available for properties. We know we have a couple. We've got Bishop Field, we've got Continental Boulevard, the school property. The central station, there's general ideas where it may be. If we go that route, I'm kind of, I'm in favor of that, but I'm kind of fading out of that because I just don't see that as happening. When I see how tight our budget is now with the numbers continuously rising, I just can't imagine some of these things happening. And so, for me, not being an expert like these gentlemen, these folks who will be putting together this study, I see Bishop Field as something that would happen and could happen as, you know, as a satellite operation to cover Babusak Lake. The south station, where it is or over the Continental. I just don't, I don't know in the end, after all the work, and they're going to do a lot of work. I don't know what extra, you know, good benefit it will be, because I just, you know, if we could ignore the money, it could come up with great ideas, but I just...
It gives you options. Right now, you think the South Merrimack Station's in the right spot? I don't know, given that digital's, not digital. Fidelity is built out, you know, and then you've got that new apartment complex going in next to the mall. I mean, that was not thought of when that station was put up.
Right.
So, there's a lot of things that have changed. And at the end, you're right, maybe we can't afford to move it. It has to stay where it is. But at least now, you're making a decision based on information versus what opinion is.
Right.
And I'd like to take opinion out and go with data and facts.
Yeah. And there might be a spot we're not even thinking of.
Well, I try to think of those things, though.
But they could say right now, honestly, right? Meeting House Road in Turkey Hill is the geographic center of the town of Merrimack. They could say, you need a station at 76 Turkey Hill Road, which is the highway garage. We got land there. You know, that could be, that could be our south station, so to speak. I don't know, and that's what the chief is looking at. Let them tell us where they think the station should be, and then we can figure out, number one, do we have the resources to build? Or do we just expand what we have? But at least we'll have the backing or data for the decision, instead of taking a chart and just throwing darts at a board saying, this is where we think it's been. And that's, that's how it was five, six years ago, was, I think we need to do this. I think, you know, we need to be on Continental Boulevard because we can get to the highway quicker. Okay? There was no, that was the only thought. We can get to the highway quicker. Because if we need to go up to Exit 12, we can get on the highway and go up. There was no thought saying, wait a second, during rush hour, you're not getting up the highway. You know, you're not getting up the highway any quicker than you would if you go up Route 3, so to speak. So, that's what the chief is trying to do with this study, is to look at these locations, look at this time, and put factual data behind where these locations might be. One location might be Reed's Ferry. They might say that's a great location for XYZ, and we might have to try to get additional land up there somehow.
That's the point, though. Seeing, going through this past budget, it's hard for me to even imagine. I seen, going through this past budget, it's, um, yeah, it's hard for me to even imagine, but, yeah. I'm, you know, I'm, I said I'm, I'm willing to go with it, but I just fear that it will have all that great stuff, but nothing will happen.
Well, and that's my job, um, to continue to take steps.
Yep.
You know, at, uh, my town in Selbridge, it took five years for us to get a station. Once we picked the ball back up when it got dropped after two thousand, I picked it back up in two thousand and sixteen. It took them five years to finally get a vote to get it done. But we took, when we took the oath, we said, we're not gonna take no for an answer. We're gonna continue to try and get the project accomplished. They picked up and kept going where I left off, and they got it done. So, we have, we can't stop, we know we need facilities, and when someone says no, we have to ask why and be polite. It's okay to say no, but we need to understand why and hopefully get that person to understand why we need what we need. And the more data we have to justify the argument, it just helps bolster the case. Because we can't just keep kicking the can down the road. We're, we're here today, but I wanna take a step.
I want doesn't mean anything.
No, we, but we have to take a step.
I need is a different argument.
So, Chief, um, one other question that I have. Does this take mutual aid or surrounding communities into account when they do this review? Or do they look at Merrimack like an island in the big, in a big city?
No, I, I'm sure mutual aid would play some type of part, especially when you look at that response model that NFPA uses, four minutes for an engine, four minutes for the, or eight minutes for the second engine. They'll probably take into account some of those abilities. But, you know, usually, you know, they try to figure out what can you do standalone by yourself for those first ten minutes? What can you do? What do you need for that first ten minutes? And then at the end of the day, you guys get to decide what's the level of risk.
Thanks.
Like if, yeah, I know. But if you, if you decide not to invest in something near Babusak Lake, well, that's a decision that, you know, you guys get to make. And hopefully we get to, you know, have the voter input and have open hearings and those types of things. So, we get feedback from the public. Well, what do you want? And then when they understand what they want, okay, we'll put a price tag to it. And then they might change their mind when they see what that price tag's gonna be. And now it's like, well, maybe I don't really want that. But until we start to put some of these things together and put, you know, data on paper to mean something, we, I, we're, we're just spinning our wheels, and I, I'd like to try to take a step. And see what then, what's the next step after that? Because now we'll have a direction.
Nancy, Murphy?
Uh, thank you. I just a couple of questions. Um, in, in terms of the, uh, your memo, um, are you, is the suggestion that the National Regional Planning Commission not be selected to do the study, or, or that, or you're, uh, that you're advocating for that?
No, I, when I tried to reach out to them, because Mr. Fox had sent an email saying that he had thought Hudson had used them for a fire station, the location study. So, when I reached out to the National Regional Planning Committee, they didn't even have your records, they didn't have much. And as I thought about it, usually those types of agencies employ grand, brand-new graduates right out of school. And again, I've got nothing against those folks, but we're, we're at another level. But, you know, we've done, you know, waited a long time for this, and I think, you know, to bring in a fully functioning outside agency that knows what they're doing. I'm sure they'll use the GIS data that National Regional Planning has for Merrimack. That would be a super help, it would save them a lot of groundwork, so that we'll grab whatever we can from them. But to utilize them as the, the only source to do the project, I'm not sure would be the best option, given what I've learned.
Another question.
Yep.
I, I was just, I, I'm not sure, but it looks like the, um, the master plan was from twenty thirteen, and it said it was amended in, uh, January of twenty twenty. Is information there important in terms of popul, I mean, I know it's distance, but in, in terms of, when you're looking at response time, if there are areas that may be more developed, like, like we're talking Continental, would having a sense of what the master plan is be, be important to?
That would be all of that data gathering that we talked about in my presentation. They're gonna pull all of that information together. Because you're right, if there's more of a dense population in a certain area of town, well, then we may need to put, and I use the term may, may need to put additional resources in that location. But now we will have information to make that decision, do we wanna do that?
Right, I'm just thinking forward-thinking, because we would probably not have anticipated the growth that we have now many years ago.
Correct. And that's why also let's talk to community development. What do they see coming up in the future, so that we can plan for that now? Like I said, we're investing millions of dollars in facilities, whether we redo what we have or we build new ones. We're talking millions of dollars, so let's make sure we do it right and not, you know, waste the public's money.
Thank you.
No, just send it on down to Paul. So, uh, any other questions or thoughts? He's asking for thirty thousand to be withdrawn from the fire, whatever it is, the, excuse me. Fire and rescue departments request for, from the Fire Station Capital Reserve Fund for a study on fire station locations and, and facilities. Moved by Barbara Healy to approve that request, seconded by Nancy Harrington. Does anybody else have any comments or wanna add any thoughts? Seeing none, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed or abstaining? That passes seven zero zero, thank you.
Counsel, I, I just wanna say thank you so much, and especially for staying late night to listen to me, you know, talk. So, I appreciate it, thank you so much.
You're welcome, thank you for hanging out with us. We, do we have to discuss the default budget tonight, or?
Yes.
Oh, okay, fine, be that way.
Can you make it quick?
We have a three-minute break.
If there's, do we need a few-minute break? Um, let's take a, a few-minute break, make it as short as possible.
Yeah.
Okay, so we'll take a, we'll call it a five-minute break.
Stand up.
The reason why you need to do, oh, we're still in recess.
We'll call the meeting back to order. We're all back, right?
Yes. I, I understand it's, it's a late night and, you know, why do we need to talk about default budget? Because the default budget number is actually in the warrant and it's listed in article, the budget article. Um, basically what the default budget says is that you take last year's budget, approved budget, which was voted on thirty-four million, five hundred thirty-nine dollars, four hundred ninety-five thou- thirty-four million, five hundred thirty-nine thousand, four hundred ninety-five dollars, and then you make certain adjustments going forward, such as we have four contractual agreements that were voted in and ratified by the, the people of Merrimack, and they had dollar amounts of twelve thousand, thirty-four thousand, eighty-two thousand, and ninety-six thousand dollars that would increase the certain operating from last year, or two thousand twenty-one, twenty-two. And then we had some other contractual benefits that go along with these contracts, such as health insurance, New Hampshire retirement increases, and our worker comp increases. And one, then they say, okay, take out your capital one-time purchases, which was around seventy-two thousand dollars, and then you can do your debt service. What was your debt service last year? What's your debt service this year? The reason why debt service is going down about three hundred thousand dollars is that's wastewater. One of their bonds dropped in two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three. Um, they, they, it's, it was finished, so that's the decrease of three hundred thousand dollars. And what, what the default budget does is it apples-to-apples compares two thousand twenty-one, twenty-two for what it should be in twenty-two, twenty-three. So with all these ebbs and flows, it's saying that the total default budget for the town of Merrimack for twenty-two, twenty-three would be thirty-four million, three hundred fifty-five thousand, five hundred and seventy-two. And then we go through it and I do estimation of what the tax rate would be. And basically-
Can you back up for one quick question? You said the, the debt service went down because of wastewater bond being paid off?
Right.
But wastewater is not in the town budget.
It is in the warrant article. Remember, we're doing appropriations and wastewater is included in the appropriation warrant article.
Okay.
They are part of the general fund budget, not the general fund budget, but the overall budget-
The town municipal budget.
The town municipal budget in this thirty-four million dollars.
You're right. Thank you.
Okay, so, question?
Do you have a question?
Yes.
Okay.
So this would be one of those rare instances where the, the, the voted budget would be less than what the default budget equals with all of the-
Nope.
Calculations?
Nope.
No?
Well, no, this default budget is for a different year than the voted budget.
That's true.
So we're looking at-
But it's the prior.
But what, what we, what we just approved earlier in the night was thirty-six million dollars?
Okay.
The default budget is thirty-four million dollars?
I think he's getting there on the next page.
Yep.
So basically you take the thirty-four million, three fif- three hundred fifty-five thousand, five seventy-two, then we have estimated revenues, and your adds for your overlay of vet credit comes to a net property tax of seventeen million, seven hundred and thirty thousand, six hundred eighteen dollars, divided by the property valuation, it, the tax rate would be at three dollars and fifty-two cents if the default was voted in. Um, proposed budget is three dollars and sixty-two cents. There's a ten-cent difference. The difference basically is made up of what the proposed budget of thirty-six million, two eighteen, eight forty, less what the default budget above of thirty-four million, three hundred and fifty-five thousand, five hundred and seventy-two dollars is about one point eight million dollars. Uh, tax rate variance on that is thirty-seven cents. Tax rate variance on use of fund balance is twenty-seven cents, because I don't know what the fund balance would be if we're in a default setting. What the council may or may not want to do if we go into the default budget as to offset taxes and things of that sort with the revenue, so I always back that out in the calculation because we don't know what, what's going to happen and, and things of that sort. So it comes to a ten cent. Out of that one point eight million dollars, it's a big number. However, you gotta remember, we talked about eight hundred thousand dollars for the SAFRA grant. We talk about another eight hundred thousand dollars for the phase two of the eight hundred megahertz. Out of that one point eight million dollars, one point six million dollars is talking in just those two projects. So really, the default budget is up one point eight million dollars in reality, but overall, it's only up two hundred and something thousand dollars over last year because of those two big projects we have in the budget this year. And when we do the voter's guide, we need to explain what the difference is and why there is a difference, to educate, to educate the public, to say that this one point eight million dollars and what, why the number is that way. Because when they go into the voting booth, they're going to see the thirty-six, two, and the thirty-four, three, and they're going to have to make a determination whether you want to default or not. And then you can always come back to the council and the council makes their, their, the default comes back to the council and the council makes the budget from there. We have one, one or two, excuse me, one or two meetings to make the default, if it goes that route. So what I would need from the council tonight is approval of moving the thirty-four million, three hundred and fifty-five thousand, five hundred and seventy-two dollars to the warrant.
As the default.
As the default budget.
I'll move the default budget to thirty-four million.
I'll move the default budget of thirty-four million, three hundred fifty-five thousand, five hundred seventy-two dollars to the warrant.
Motion by Finley, seconded by Andy, to, to move the default number to the warrant. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or abstaining? Passes seven zero zero.
Just one end of this plug. March ninth, deliberative session, seven o'clock, APR room, James Mascollo Upper Medical School. Ah, James Mascollo Upper Elementary School. Um, that is all I have for presentations. Um, we do, however, have the warrant that we need to talk about.
So we need to go over each of the items that we've moved to the warrant and either make a recommendation or not based on what that's required? Is that what you're?
Correct.
Getting it?
Correct, yes.
Okay. So the first article is all about electing a people, and for some reason you say here that there are three town councilors-
Three, two.
And in parentheses, two?
Yeah, there, there are two.
There are two?
There are, there are three openings, but only two for three years.
Two for three years. Just checking. Okay, and one town councillor positioned for a one-year term, one library trustee for a three-year term, two ethics committee members for three-year terms, one trustee of the trust funds for a three-year term, one moderator for a two-year term, and one supervisor of the checklist for a six-year term.
Correct.
That's article one, so we don't have anything to do with that. Article two talks about the wastewater treatment bond uh, for ten million, one hundred, two thousand, seven hundred fifty dollars, as we talked about earlier this evening in the public hearing. Where, I guess we're looking for, it's, it's, we've moved it to the warrant, we're looking now to make a recommendation?
Right, the, the, what, what needs, excuse me, what needs to be done is the council needs to make a recommendation, if they so fit, on this article number two. And then once after the recommendation, um, um, then you'll have to move the article to deliberative session.
Oh, okay. So, we need a motion to recommend article two as written?
So moved.
Made by Lon Woods, seconded by Nancy Harrington. Um, is there any questions or anything that anybody doesn't understand, especially if you're new to this process? Okay, so we'll call for a vote to recommend article two as presented. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or abstaining? So the recommendation is seven zero.
I move that we move article two to the warrant.
And Finley made a motion to move article two to, to the deliberative session.
To the deliberative session.
Seconded by Nancy, by Andy. Um, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or abstaining? That passes seven zero zero. Article three is the ladder fire truck. We didn't move that to the warrant.
Correct, so that will come off. The new article three will be the petition bond.
Article three will be a petition bond of three million dollars. Um, this one does not require the town council to, um, take a position on it, supporting or not, and, but it does need for us to move it to the deliberative session.
It already is there.
It's already in the deliberative session, so article three, the former article four will go on as printed, I guess. Um, what's listed here is article five will become article four. See how the town ra- raises appropriate and operating budget of?
Thirty-six million, two hundred and eighteen thousand, eight hundred and forty dollars.
And so this article will be the default budget will be?
Thirty-four million, three hundred fifty-five thousand, five hundred and seventy-two.
Five hundred and seventy-two?
Correct.
And twenty-two cents? Oh. Um, sorry, scratched that. Which is the same as last year with certain adjustments. Uh, we need a motion to approve, to recommend, made by Barbara Healy, seconded by Nancy Murphy. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or abstaining? That passes seven zero zero. We need a motion to move it to the deliberative session.
So moved.
Made by Finley, seconded by Nancy Murphy. I saw her hand first. Um, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or abstaining? That passes seven zero zero. Article six, see if the town will vote to raise an appropriate sum of two-
It's now five.
Which is now five.
Yeah.
To raise an appropriate sum of two million, two thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars to be added to the capital reserve expendable trust funds previously established as listed. Why is those numbers don't match? Oh, no, they don't match.
The new number is one million, nine hundred, forty-seven thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars.
Thank you. Nine forty-seven, two fifty. So article five, two.
It's right there.
To, to, uh, move the capital reserve funds. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
To recommend? Made by Nancy Harrington? By Finley?
No, made by Nancy. I'll second.
Made by Nancy? Motion made by Nancy, seconded by Finley?
Yep.
Yes.
Because he got ahead of you?
Oh, sorry, Andy.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or abstaining? That passes seven zero zero. I need a motion to move it to the deliberative session.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Andy and seconded by Barbara. Andy Hunter, Barbara Healy, you guys know what I'm talking about. Um, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed or abstaining? That passes seven zero zero. Article now-
Six, yeah.
Six, which was article seven, is that right?
Mm-hmm.
See if the town will raise an appropriate sum of five hundred thousand to add to the sewer infrastructure capital reserve fund. Uh, I need a motion to recommend.
So moved.
Made by Andy, seconded by Nancy Murphy, uh, to recommend article, what's now six, for the sewer infrastructure capital reserve fund. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or abstaining? Seven zero zero. I need to move it to the deliberative session. Motion by Barbara Healy.
Seconded by me.
Seconded by Nancy Harrington to move it to the deliberative session. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or abstaining? That passes seven zero zero. Article seven will be the town of Merrimack voting on the collective bargaining agreement with council with local six thirty-three. Uh, I need a motion to recommend.
So moved.
Barbara Healy, seconded by Finley. Is that right?
Wrong.
Okay.
Oh, I said second.
But I- What?
Lon.
Seconded by Lon?
Yep.
Um, to recommend. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or abstaining? That passes seven zero zero. Motion to move it to the deliberative session. By Lon Woods, seconded by Finley. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or abstaining? Seven zero, zero. Article nine, uh, with further adjustments based on what we discussed earlier this evening about, well, it's going to be article eight, but-
That doesn't need-
Charter amendment.
Right.
Where in, the addition will be to further, the, the board may recommend to the town council, and the town council may appoint up to two alternate members for a one-year term.
Correct.
Um, motion to rec- do we need a recommendation?
This wording, do we want a recommendation? Are we going off that wording, or did you read it?
I, I read the changes that we had talked about.
Okay.
So that the recommend to the town council, and the town council may appoint up to two alternate members.
Yeah, yeah, because here it was, same as we could recommend, but it was a little odd.
Yeah, yeah.
So you just need this move to the deliberative session, right?
Correct. If we don't want to re- can we recommend, or should we not even touch it?
Technically, we cannot recommend because it's not a money article. Only money articles, really, the council can recommend.
Okay, I thought we had the option, but, but you may be right. I don't care. Um, I need a motion to move it to the deliberative session. Second. Who made the motion?
Nancy.
Nancy made the motion and Andy Hunter seconded to move it to the deliberative session. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or abstaining? That passes seven zero zero. Any more questions, Paul?
Uh, that's all I have. Um, we've moved the whole warrant to the deliberative session on March ninth.
As, as modified.
As modified. Um, this will give me a couple days, it'll be printed up, uh, for your signature. Um, you gotta come in and sign it, and then we can do what we need to do.
When's, when's our, have to sign it by date, or?
Have to, it has to be posted by the end of, um, end of February, the last Monday of February, which is the twenty-eighth of February. So that's the drop dead date. We have to get, um, the state, we have to do all the state forms, the MS six thirty-six and the MS six thirty-six default, which also needs to be signed by the council, but the way the state does things now is that we need to put all our numbers in, they need to approve our numbers, they need to approve the warrant articles, then it needs to come back to the council for their signatures. So we'll be getting all this to you in the next couple of weeks. Hopefully by next Friday, everything will be available for, for signatures.
So it says February twenty-first posting. That's not what you're talking about.
You're looking at, uh, schedule and begin at front of the budget book?
Huh?
What?
It says February twenty-first posting of the warrant. That's not what you're talking about, right?
No, I'm talking about the certification. It was the-
That's not listed here then in your?
February twenty-eighth is the posting of it.
Okay.
And that date changed because it was, you know, Monday of February came, dropped in as, as the twenty-eighth. I was trying to figure out when school vacation week was, because that's when we normally post. And I don't even know when school vacation week is. I think it's still the twenty-first.
I think it's the last full week of February.
Yeah, so that's why we're doing it, because usually we can't get into the schools. But if it's the twenty-eighth, we'll be able to get into the school.
You can nail it to the door like Martin Luther did.
Yeah, yeah, we can.
Um, did you, sorry. It's getting late. The next thing on our agenda is minutes. We have minutes from January nineteenth. We can either move the minutes, or we could, uh, postpone them until next week, next meeting.
Should we table them until the next meeting?
Motion to table the minutes.
Second.
Until the next meeting.
Motion by Nancy Harrington, seconded by Barbara Healy to table the minutes to the next meeting uh, for January nineteenth, January twenty-sixth, and January twenty-seventh. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I'm opposed. Any abstaining?
You lose.
No, six, one, zero. Tom Kanigs in opposition. Comments from the press? Or the public? Comments from the council? Barbara?
I ask your indulgence for one minute. I've been trying to, I've been trying to actually talk about this for a down, for the last three meetings, and we always ran out of time. So I'm going to be real quick, but I feel it needs to be said. We have a young lady who is a student at Merrimack High School. Her name is Alexis Poisson. She's, uh, she has been named as a finalist in the Military Child of the Year Awards Program sponsored by Operation Home Front. She is representing the Air Force and is the only finalist from New Hampshire. Her nomination, uh, her nomination letters describe her participation in projects to highlight the effect learning disabilities have on children and how remediation programs can help children overcome these disabilities, and she is a prime example of this. At Merrimack High, she is a member of the Art Honor Society and also participates in taekwondo and operation flags for veterans, battalion buddies, and dyslexia awareness. I just want to congratulate her on being one of the five finalists in this national competition and representing New Hampshire and Merrimack.
That's wonderful. Thank you. Nancy Murphy?
Thank you. I, yeah, I want to kudos to Lexi and her parents, Matt and Jenny. They're, they're phenomenal community members and they do all kinds of, of things here. Um, the, the, just a reminder, tomorrow morning at nine AM, we're having a HB seven thirty-seven PFAS Commission meeting. It's going to be virtual, um, and the public is invited to attend, and I'm not going to give you the link because there's too many letters and numbers, but, um, the public's welcome to listen, um, and to join the meeting, and anybody that's interested can either email amy.e.rousseau, and roussau is R-O-U-S-S-E-A-U at D E S dot N H dot gov, or call her at six oh three, eight four eight, one three seven two, um, to, to, to join. So I would suggest probably early in the morning because the meeting starts at nine. Um, email's going to be monitored throughout the meeting. It can also be used during the public comment section that comes at the end. Uh, tomorrow on the agenda, we're going to be discussing the recent ATSDR and DHHS meetings that were held. Um, we're going to review, and this is really important, I think, a draft letter that, um, some of us have really, um, moved to, uh, to expand the San Gobain Consent Decree area, and that's a, um, some of us feel really strongly that that should be happening. So there'll be discussion about, uh, that tomorrow. Also to receive the updates from DHHS, DES, and any public comments. So again, tomorrow morning at nine AM, if anybody's interested. Thank you.
Great, thanks. Any other comments from the councilors?
I'll just be real quick. I hate to do it. Sorry, Lon. I watched a zoning board meeting, um, a, a week ago, oh, dealing with property on Twinbridge Road. Either I need an education on how zoning variances work, or the zoning board does, because what I think they did was created a wholesale zoning change as a five-member board. Um, and it wasn't a variance. They allowed a developer to, where he could build twenty-eight units for an apartment building, two separate ones, fourteen in each. They gave him an extra twenty units. I felt terrible for the neighbors who came to testify. Um, they were kind of dismissed, in my opinion, but maybe I just was annoyed at what was happening and it bothered me, so maybe I mis, you know, misperceived that. But anyhow, so I'm, I don't know if anybody else needs it, but I need an education, somebody needs an education on what the zoning board's proper role is. And either I need the education, or they do. I don't know who it is, probably me, but I'd like that to, uh, have Tim maybe reach out to me if nobody else needs it.
Yeah, I had a question about that as well, so.
Yeah, it was five people making those decisions. It was, it was pretty heavy-handed, I thought, so.
I would join in on that. Education.
So, yeah, so I don't know. I'd be interested. So thank you, and sorry for bringing that up tonight.
Great, thank you. Any other comments from the council? Seeing none. Need a motion to adjourn? Move to adjourn? Motion by Andy, uh, seconded by Barbara to adjourn. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or abstaining?
Yeah.
Seven zero zero. Good night, Merrimack.